To order, please. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:01. This is a joint meeting with the Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 14, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
I will, Madam Mayor. I'm going to start out with the Assembly and move on to the Planning Commission. Tim Hale, are you on the phone? I am expecting him to call in. Stephanie Nowers. Dee McKee.
Yep.
Robert Yunt.
Here.
Moki Two.
Yep.
Dmitri Fahnoff.
Here.
Ron Bernier.
Here.
Doug Glenn.
Here.
Richard Allen.
Here.
C.J. Cohen.
Here.
Michael Rubio. Are you on the phone?
Yes, here.
Bill Kandig.
Here.
Will Fernandez, are you on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Kurt Scoggan. You do have a quorum of both bodies, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, and the agenda is approved as presented. Will you all rise, please, and I'm asking Chairman of the Planning Commission to lead us in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is audience participation. And I think the clerk is going out to see if there is a sign-up sheet. And even if you didn't sign up, there will be an opportunity for you there that are here presently to testify, as well as we'll go online and see who is there. Thanks, Lonnie. Okay, for the sign-up sheet, Patty?
Oh, my gosh. It's down where it's supposed to be without me changing it. My name is Patty Fisher. I'm a Valley resident. I am speaking tonight in opposition to the gravel legislation, which is up for discussion later in the meeting. I don't have any idea what changes are being made, new amendments pending or rewritten or changed. So I'm just going to speak more, not to details, but to some simple facts. And they are, first, this legislation is unnecessary, in my opinion. The current permitting process is working. Eighty-five percent of the applications submitted are passed, and they are passed quickly within 30 days. The major problem with the legislation is that it takes place, it takes the public out of the process. There are serious consequences to a gravel pit, pollution of water and air, safety and traffic issues, noise, and reduction of property values. I know you all have heard that the Valley Board of Realtors is opposed to the legislation. Very simply, communities need to be able to comment on the location of a pit. This legislation was tried to have been passed only 15 months ago. And the public spoke out loud, spoke out loudly in opposition then. I question, why are you trying to change it at this short period when you know that the public was not happy with the previous legislation, with the previous attempt? Mr. Bernier stated at our community council meeting recently that this was not about gravel. That was about leveling lots. I, that was, confused me just a bit. It says gravel in Mr. Yunt's amendments three times and earth extraction material seven times in the base ordinance. If the fill is being moved to a lot with the same owner, and it is for his or her personal use, no extraction permit is required. In other words, if you move dirt from your one lot because you're leveling it to another lot which needs it, there is no, that you own, there is no permit required. A permit is required if the fill is bartered or sold to another person. So talking about moving fill to lots which are not currently building, that would most likely be a transaction involving remuneration for the fill, and a permit is required. Last Tuesday, this room was filled with people in opposition to this legislation. The count was forty-seven in favor and five in opposition. I ask you, please listen to what the public has to say. We're not stupid, and we will remember your actions. This legislation is unnecessary and destructive. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila?
Good evening, and thank you very much. I have to speak quickly. I have a lot to say, and mine is very detailed.
Okay, state your name, please.
I have to do what I have to do. First of all, we're looking to change.
State your name, please.
I'm so sorry. Sheila Hefner, H-E-F-F-N-E-R.
Thank you.
We're looking to change 17 dot 30 dot O 20. I urge everybody here, I hope you have read O 10. O 10 is the chapter, is the section right before that, talks about intent. Number one, and number two, public review and prevent devaluation of the site that the gravel is coming from and also neighboring properties. So important, and I think everything we're doing is contrary to that. Then, on the Assemblyman Yunt's changes, which are good, much better than the beginning, but I would ask a few detailed changes. On number four, number four, if we could make that 4A and change it to 200 feet, I'm asking for 200 feet instead of 100 feet within a water body, and then add at 4B, and asking that the extraction may not occur within a public drinking water protection area. And I'll come back to that if I have any time. Then, on the next page, item number six, where it says, "Surface water quality shall be protected," and it goes on about the best practices. I would ask that we put the ground and surface water, quality and quantity, be protected throughout the life of the project, that's new. So that, that change. And then, just in general, on permits, I hope that we will have the operator contact information, and I hope that registrations will be available to the public, although I do think that we should require the name of the person making the inquiry. I think we should have that on record. And lastly, I think that with regard to registrations, I hope that we would have the operator sign an acknowledgement. We're asking a few more things with this new amendment, and I hope, for example, the best practices manual. You know, I think that they should actually sign something that says they know how to access it. Or this, what I'm hoping for is to bring up protection well, protection areas and make sure that they understand how they can access the information. The reason I think that's so important is, I think that they're the ones that need to be responsible if it's any problem, and the only way that people are responsible is if you know that they've read or at least had access to the information. And then, I would like to make a comment that I was a part of a many people who were against a particular mine being built in South Palmer. It was the Pacific Mine in 2018, and that we received a comment from Chris Miller at Alaska Department of Okeechob. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark?
Hello, my name's Mark Catini, and I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. I'm not just here to speak about the gravel. What I'm here tonight to do is provide you a history lesson, what I experienced 16 years ago, a little over 16 years ago, working for my clients. I'm going to talk to you about grandfather-right gravel pits. Back in 2006, 16 years ago, for all of the gravel pits, this was the application that was sent out to our engineering firm, and our clients brought them to us. I'm handing this to Madam Clerk so she can hand this out to all of you. It's 20 copies there, and there's also Madam Clerk copies for the staff, but I'm sure they have it. These two binders are two separate gravel pits that exist in the Matsu Valley today. One's in Palmer and one's up on the Fish Hook. They're over 10 miles apart. I'm going to tell you right now, in this three minutes, I'm not going to get through all of this binder, but I want to give you the highlights so you know what it was like 16 years ago when you look at the application that was handed out to you, what we had to submit. There was the, fill out the application, there were site plans. We had to hire a surveying firm. Some people chose not to, some people chose to hand draw it up. Our clients wanted someone like a surveyor to go out there. We also had to work with the Matsu Borough to get a notification of the homeowners that lived within either half a mile or a mile. And that was dependent on the acreage. If it was less than 20 acres, it was a half a mile. If it was more, it was a mile. So we had to, in the middle of this drawing, you'll see the gravel pit. On the outside, you'll see the boundary. What that meant was, at that time, we didn't have the GIS system. We had to generate all the contacts for that, and the Borough mailed it out to notify all those people within a mile. We also, obviously, to keep the, take care of our neighbors, we had a noise mitigation plan that was required, and we had all of the compliance. These are all compliance here with state and federal regulation reclamation plans, Clean Water Act, notice of intention, sweeps, so your disturbing ground, we had to get the sweeps. And then, of course, all the business licenses with the state and the Matsu Borough. Very, very extensive. I want to thank you for joining me in this little history lesson. And I just felt that a lot of people didn't realize that grandfather-right gravel pits went through an extensive process. They just wasn't given to those landowners. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else that would like to testify or speak to the Assembly and Planning Commission on any subject, whether it's on the agenda or not, you're welcome to come forth.
My name is Dick Clifford, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly and the Planning Commission. Transportation infrastructure needs to take into account the ever-growing threat of terrorism. Many of you identify as conservative. I do not believe the conservative approach will be successful here. But first, what is a terrorist and what is a conservative? Oxford definition, Oxford Dictionary defines a terrorist as one whom uses unlawful violence and intimidation in pursuit of political aim. But the Federals in D.C. consider any act they commit to be lawful and define terrorism by executive order. To conserve means to use or lose as little as possible. To lose, albeit as little of something as possible, is losing whatever you're clinging to. Are you conserving liberty as if it were a commodity, not a lifestyle? Is your plan to lose our freedom as slow as possible? What is the end to your political means? Controlled opposition until you lose? D.C. would have me locked in a cage for possessing flowers that God created. Across Babylon, many face that same fate, mothers, fathers, veterans trying to heal, and epileptics, parents of epileptics. They do this with the money stolen from us through taxation and inflation. Then they use it to buy back our complacency. Our conservative assembly is the broker. I know some of you ran for office to fight the COVID tyranny. Great. Tyranny was present before 2020, snuck in under many different names, wore on an invisible enemy, a virus, an idea, or a drug. But make no mistake, these wars will use us as the fodder and are meant to be continuous. Freedom is not a finite resource. It is not a gift, it is a gift from God. But if we let D.C. destroy or define what God established, we will lose it all. This mindset won't leave anything for my daughter's generation to conserve. No, now is not the time to conserve. Why are we on the defense when we know we will win this battle? But you can't do it taking bribes. You can't serve two masters. We don't need the Assembly bargaining for our complacency. Stand up. Knowify federal agencies that are unconstitutional. Kick them out of Matsu. If we never sent our money to D.C. in the first place, we wouldn't have to fight for it back. Or side with the terrorists. Take their money. Or we could do something here. I'm advocating for liberty. Let's build something miraculous. Let's build something that will last, because one day, any roads that we build are going to burn up. And I don't care what they call me. I know I'm not a terrorist. So are you with us, or are you with a terrorist? At least I'm not yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly and the Planning Commission? Okay, do we have, we have a person online? Okay, go ahead, whoever's online, please.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Wood, and I am, that's W-O-O-D-O-S, and I'm calling in from Talcutna. And I was online, I both sent letters and testified when the gravel ordinance was proposed last week. And I plan to give my testimony again next week. But I wanted you guys to know that public notification and public process is really important. And I looked at tonight's agenda, and the first time I looked at it, this discussion wasn't even on here. And then it's been added, I don't know when it was added. But this is a really, really, really serious proposal. It really cuts out the public, it cuts out notifications. I haven't seen anything that says how the Borough will even enforce what little might wind up in the ordinance. The public's against it, you know, many, many things. I don't want to, we don't know if there's going to be more amendments, you know? Mr. Yunt talked about working on his amendments up to the last minute. But you guys haven't shared with us what is being done on this. And next week is too soon. Anyway, I wanted you to know, we're listening. We used to get, in Talcutna, we, for years and years and years, our Assemblyperson would either come to our community council meetings and send us an email, letting us know things that were happening in the borough when they were coming up. And that's not happening anymore. And it's really important to keep your constituents up to date on what, what's happening. And yes, we have some responsibility to look at agendas, et cetera, but there's many, many boards in the borough. And it's really impossible to keep up with all of them. So your constituents depend on you. And we depend on you to solicit our opinions before you bring them to a meeting of the Assembly. Where you're, and anyway, I just feel like that people are being cut out of this. And you're so rushing to do something that people are so opposed to that you're just saying we're not important, but we are important. So anyway, just wanted you to know that I'm listening, and I'll be sharing what I learned tonight with other people in Talcutna. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online, Caleb? Okay, go ahead, whoever else is online.
Hi, my, my name is Camden Yeely, spelled Y-E-H-L-E. I'm speaking today as the president of the Meadow Lakes Community Council. The Meadow Lakes Community Council membership voted at our March 8, 2023, meeting to oppose the proposed gravel ordinance. We had about 25 people in attendance. We support maintaining the current limit of 2,000 cubic yards to require a permit as well as the existing conditional use permitting process. We appreciate the existing public process and would like to keep it going. And I'm going to leave it at that for now because of all the good details that people have already stated. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online, Caleb? No, okay. So I'll bring it back to the room here. So anyone that would like to address any item to the Assembly and the Planning Commission, you're welcome to come forth at this time. Okay, seeing no one, then I'll go ahead and close audience participation. The next item on our agenda is joint items of business, Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities projects updated. So, here he comes. I think probably in your.
Thank you, May, Mayor DeReez.
Good evening, sir.
Assemblymembers, members, commissioners, thanks for having me here to speak tonight. I'm going to give a quick overview. First off, I'm Clint Adler, and I'm the lead engineer for the Matsu District Office of the Department of Transportation and Public Facilities out here on Seward Meridian Road here. I'm going to give a quick overview, I'll try to keep it under 15, 20 minutes or so, of all of the construction projects that we have planned in 2023. And then I'll also talk a little bit about the Parks Highway Alternative Corridor Planning and Environmental Linkage Study. I'll give you a little update on that as well. So the first off is a shot, a screenshot of our website that shows all of the 2023 season construction projects that we have planned in the Matanuska Valley. You'll see a list of them there. I'll go quickly through those, and anybody has any questions, feel free to just jump in. Did I kill it already? All right. So these, I want to first highlight the department's Highway Safety Improvement Program and the projects, there's two projects in red there. The Central Region Guardrail Inventory and Upgrade Project. We've got a number of those coming out here in the valley, and I'll share them on the next slide. And the other project you'll see in construction is at Church Road and Spruce Avenue. We're going to be putting in a flashing beacon in there for, for safety reasons this summer. And all the other projects you see listed there are ones that we currently have, have in the works in design, with the exception of the Glen Highway median barrier, which I forgot to delete out of there. That one's already done. Okay. I mentioned the guardrail project. It says, those are roads that you're going to see us out there this summer, installing new guardrail and updating the guardrails on. There's a website there, you can see that, you can even download plans and get all your questions answered. I said that the construction's going to be about 11.4 million. Actually, it's 14 million. So correction to that. The next project you'll see us out on this summer is finishing up the, the three bridges up on the Parks Highway, Sheek Creek, Goose Creek, and Montana Creek. We intend to polish those up this summer. I just drove by there on the way out of Fairbanks this weekend, and all the bridges are in. They just got to finish, finish the work and, and decommission the temporary bridges that are, that are being used right now. And the next project you'll see us out on is up the Glen Highway, just, just by, in the Chickalooan area, Kings River Bridge. The Western Federal Lands Division of the Federal Highway Administration is the design and construction manager for that. And they are going to replace the Kings River Bridge, which is sorely in need of replacement. So that'll, that should be done this summer. Next, most of the earthquake repair work that we've been doing for the last several years is coming to an end here. But I did want to mention that there's, there's a few projects in the, in the area that are still going to be polishing up. One of them is on the Glen-Parks Interchange. There was some sloughing of the, of the approach there. They'll be finishing that up. In addition, there's a little, there's some culvert work out on Knick Goose Bay, towards the end of Knick Goose Bay Road, and then Woodward Loop near the hospital. There's just some polish up work there. So minor work, but I wanted to mention that. The big one that we were working on the last couple of years, we're going to be finishing that up. And we just wanted to mention the Parks Highway, Pittman to Big Lake Road. Most of that you've seen is already done, but there's a few cleanup items that we'll be finishing up this summer. Should mention, all told, that was, including right-of-way design and construction, close to $100 million project, so. It's a good, good upgrade there. And we're all real happy to say that Knick Goose Bay Road will be continuing this summer and the next summer. Phase two there to, to upgrade that facility. We'll be awfully busy out there this summer.
Can I stop you one second?
Yes, Bill.
You said phase two will continue. Have they, where are they at the, on the right-of-way process on phase two?
I'm sorry, I meant to say phase one. Phase two is in the design phase right now, and they're working on all of that. My mistake, phase, phase one, phase, I get it mixed up with the Parks Highway and the, and the Glen and phases, yeah. So. And Seward Meridian, we have our fingers crossed that we can get that advertised this spring, hopefully next month. There's still some, some, some things we need to polish up on the right-of-way and permitting side. Permitting looks good, everything looks on track. So we're keeping our fingers crossed we can get that on the street here this spring. And the Glen Highway, 34 to 42, this is the other major project you'll see in construction this summer. We're going to be continuing that theme of having a divided controlled access highway all the way to the Glen-Parks Interchange there. It also includes a frontage road and a pathway as well. So everything you wanted to know on that project is, is at that website.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
On that project, so is right-of-way all done? And for, for this work that's starting this summer, when is that expected to start working? And is it actual construction, or are you moving utilities, or give a sense of that?
So we're going to bid it out, hopefully this spring, with everything falls into place with funding and everything. We're likely going to see towards the end of the summer, utility relocation start. And then the meat of the work would start the following summer and probably go on to '25. So that's, that's what, what it's looking like so far.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now I'll talk about the, unless there's any other questions on construction-related projects this summer. I'll give you a quick update on the Parks Highway Alternative Corridor Planning and Environmental Linkage Study, which we're, we're working, working hard on. Just this map here shows that the, the study area is the area south of the Parks Highway from roughly Higher Road all the way over to where Big Lake comes in, and then all the way down to the inlet. And here's a timeline to show about where we're at. We're, we've already done the, we're basically here, spring of '23, where we're almost ready to unveil the preliminary alternatives that we're going to take into further screening. And I'll go ahead and give a little details here. The project first started in the fall of '21 with a baseline analysis and data collection. And we had an open house in March of 2022 to get public input on that. And then in May '22, members of the, the technical and stakeholder advisory groups participated in a big workshop to come up with preliminary alternatives for these different corridor alignments. And then the project team further refined those preliminary alternatives and is now presenting them to the public for feedback. So this is part of that. And then we're also giving presentations to community councils, city councils, and, and public stakeholder groups. And they're going to. And they're going to also be talking about draft screening and evaluation criteria for that. So work will continue after the, this open house to identify which alternatives will advance to detailed development. And from there, the project team will select one or more corridors as recommended alternative to, to proceed into actual project development and funding and that kind of thing. So we're going to, the project team will be identifying potential interchange locations to facilitate movement between alternative corridors, the alternative corridor and existing roads. And they will also identify whether the alternative corridor can be delivered through one or more, probably multiple projects, given the size of this, of this effort. And then all this information will, the, the team will present to the public in the fall of '23, along with a draft preliminary environmental linkage study report. And the study should be finalized sometime in the winter of '23. So that's the timeline. And I just wanted to, we've got a, a draft purpose and need statement here that will be refined through the process as well. But I basically, you can see that the, the key items here are to improve safety for all transportation modes. These are the purposes. Reduce existing and future traffic congestion and increase mobility. And this is for regional and local transportation benefits. So the study seeks to improve transportation for non-motorized users, respond to community values, and support or enhance social, environmental, and energy conditions. So these are all the things that are going into it. Just kind of give you a little overview of the process we've been through so far. So the, the alternative screening process can best be thought of as a funnel. Draft alternatives are first screened to determine whether they meet purpose and need or if they have significant impacts to environmental resources and historic resources. Alternatives that did not meet these criteria were eliminated or adjusted to mitigate impacts. And that's the first part here, the, the, the beginning of the funnel, where it says draft alternate, develop draft alternatives. The project is now at a stage where preliminary alternatives are refined and evaluated quantitatively. The project team is looking at resources of, resources that are affected, safety factors, and performance measures. And public feedback is a very, as I mentioned, a very important part of this step. So that's the second part here, refine preliminary alternatives, the second part of the, the comb. Next, the project team is going to evaluate routes based on engineering feasibility, environmental, social, and economic impacts, roadway system performance, right-of-way construction costs, and a number of other factors. Again, we're narrowing down on the, on the funnel there. And the outcome of that evaluation is a recommended range of alternatives. That's where it says refine, recommended alternatives. The no-build alternative will be carried through each step of the screening process to provide a baseline for evaluation of potential impacts. The project team will continue to evaluate whether the alternatives meet the purpose and need and regulatory requirements all the way through the process. So we've developed an alternative screening criteria to guide the evaluation process. The screening criteria includes measures for safety, mobility, pavement condition, environment, community support, and cost. You see them kind of listed up there. During this first phase of screening, the project team is using the criteria in a qualitative manner. This screening step helps to identify detailed alternatives, which will be shared at the next open house to be determined sometime this spring or early summer. During phase two screening, the project team will use the criteria to quantify potential impacts as much as possible. The screening step will help to identify the recommended alternative or alternatives, which will be presented to the public in the fourth open house in the late fall or early winter of '23. And then that'll start the, this will also be the start of a 30-day review period for the study itself, a document that contains information on all the work the project team has completed over the previous two and a half years. So here's the big slide here, which y'all wanted to see. Back in May of '22, the project team hosted an alternative, I mentioned that Alternatives Develop Workshop, where they came up with these potential routes. Two types of alternative routes emerged from that workshop. The first were greenfield sites, or those that use undeveloped areas or new corridors. The second type were routes that primarily used existing infrastructure, primarily existing roads within the area. And over the past several months, the project team has refined those initial workshop corridor routes. They laid the routes out in design software to help make sure the preliminary corridors meet design requirements. The result is eight different corridors consisting of greenfield and existing infrastructure routes, plus a ninth that consists of a widened corridor along the existing Parks Highway. The project team will also evaluate a no-build alternative, as I mentioned, to understand the potential impacts of not proceeding with an alternative corridor. So some of the feedback we've heard already through the process, through the online survey, is features that generated the most interest was people liked the fact that there, that we were going to try to reduce congestion, have safer driving conditions, fewer accidents. Folks liked the fact that there'd be a new roadway with wider lanes, smoother surface, no potholes, et cetera. The top concerns were the right-of-way impacts, as you can imagine. Environmental impacts, potential to cut through green, greenfields, wetlands, streams, et cetera. And nobody wants anything to go through their property.
Yep. Can I, can I just add a little bit of humor here? On the middle there where it says features that generate the most interest, where it talks about a new roadway and no potholes, can you tell us how you're going to accomplish that to never have potholes in that new road?
We're going to have a magical thing that. Yeah. That's, that's a good one, isn't it? No potholes. So what's next? We've already been through the first two steps here that I've already talked about. This third one is a preliminary alternative screening results and a detailed alternative screening criteria. That's the workshop I'm talking of that's coming up to be determined. And the fourth public meeting towards the end of '23 will essentially be the finalizing the study and forwarding recommendations to the department to act on. So hopefully that satisfied you for now. Is there any other questions I can, I can answer?
Can I take you back to the very first page and the second page? On the second page, you talk about Bogard and Engstrom, but I don't see it on the first page. So is it definitely going to go this year?
Not this year. I, I tried to highlight in red the ones that were happening this year.
Right.
And the, since those are highway safety projects, Highway Safety Improvement Program projects, I just listed all the ones that we had in the process to emphasize our emphasis on safety.
So is it going to be next year?
Both, both, which one? The Engstrom Roundabout? Yeah. We're hoping to have it next year or 25. It's, it's, it's a kind of a, it's hard to predict because there's right-of-way acquisitions involved.
Yeah. That is, that's a big concern, as you know. Go ahead, sir.
I see the Hollywood and Vine, there's a roundabout proposed. I would hope that it's engineered a little different than the roundabout in Big Lake. I would remind you that there's those large natural gas tankers that come from Port McKenzie, Point McKenzie, down straight, straight through there to the parks. And can you imagine in the winter, especially snow that we got now, getting those vehicles around there without risk to injury to anybody? So I would hope they would take the design into consideration of what traffic is going through there.
Absolutely. One thing along those lines I should mention is the, the design of roundabouts is actually, as you rightfully point out, is, is kind of more of an art than a science. So when, we have a policy that, that requires us to do a peer review on, on the design of roundabouts. So that involves other experts that we hire to help us out with the design, in addition to public input on, on it as well. So taking that very seriously. Yes.
Go ahead. My question's going to have a similar tone to the mayor's. But the Glen Highway, that project is five years behind, and I, I've been asking repeatedly, is the construction going to start this summer? Because the ruts are terrible on that stretch of road. I know the state fair is, is changing their parking fee structure on the belief that the construction was going to start this summer and to, to smooth that a little bit. So I'm disappointed to hear that potentially we're going to be just looking at utility relocation and construction. So my question is, can we, we don't have to do it in this meeting, but can we have a discussion about the ruts? Because we had a fatality on that stretch this winter, and we probably had other accidents as well. I mean, they're, they're deep and they're filled with ice, and you got, I think the average daily count on that road is 12,000 vehicles, and it's dark. It's a real hazard. So I just would like to have a discussion about whether we can move up that timeline of construction, or if we can look at something to patch those ruts for, for safety, since we're now looking at yet another year before we even begin to, to do that. Can we do that? Set up a meeting?
Yes, through, through the mayor. Yes. One, one thing along those lines that we typically do once we, if we get a construction contractor under contract is to do something similar that we've done in Anchorage, for example, on Minnesota, where we know if we can't get asphalt construction on that season, that we can have the contractor come in there and put in a, fill the ruts, for example, to get it through the winter. So that's an option to the department.
Commissioner Corrigan? Go ahead.
Yeah. I didn't see where there was a Fairview Loop project on here at all, and I know that there had been one at one time and had been canceled. Is it planned to get back on the list in the future?
To, to, to clarify, the projects I have listed here tonight are just primarily construction projects for 2023. I have not listed all the dozens of projects we have in design. So yes, that's on, that's in the, in the loop.
I'd like to follow up on an assembly member now's comments. Maybe suggest that we probably should talk to our, our House and Senate people to just do a temporary patch like they did on KGB Road, since we were waiting so long, and there, there are deaths, and it, it is a priority.
Acknowledged.
Just a minute, Assemblyperson Domeny, and then I'll come to you, Dee. Go ahead.
I, one of the questions I get a lot from people, even though I don't live in that district, is the Church Road. I mean, the people that drive on Church Road, they seem to like figure out the maze where each pothole is and things like that, but if somebody new goes there, didn't see anything over here, can you give any kind of updates so I can give to constituents?
We have a pavement preservation project in design right now.
Say that again?
We have a pavement preservation project in design right now for Church Road.
And what's the timeframe like?
Hoping to get it in '24, but more likely '25.
So.
Shooting for '24. Yeah.
'24 realistically and '25, the actual work to be done?
Yes. Yes.
And what would, any improvements or just a repave?
Repaving.
Okay. Thank you.
Assemblyperson McKee? Go ahead.
Yeah, from what Stephanie was saying, that, that stretch along, starting at the bridge and going on into Palmer, excuse me. So the ruts are really awful, we all know that. Also, I drive that road every day, and it's kind of like, you can never see the markings. I thought it was just me, and I asked my kids at school, and they said, oh, no, my mom and dad complain about it all the time. So A, are there going to be lights on there? And B, what it is now is you point your car towards Palmer, you see the incoming cars, you say, please, God, keep me far enough on the right hand of these cars that I don't hit them, and, and not going off into, you can't see anything. Is there going to be lighting in there?
My understanding is yes, there'll be continuous lighting through there.
Really good lighting like there is on the road into Anchorage.
It'd be continuation of what you see.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay. Further questions? Yes. Commissioner, go ahead.
You alluded a little bit ago to several projects you have in the hopper, and I've asked this question many times over the last 20 years, but on the north side of Palmer, from say Fishhook into, into Palmer on the Glen, there's been this very dangerous situation now forever, where children have to walk on the side of the highway to, you know, there's no bike path, there's no safe place for kids to walk, and it's just, it's so sketchy. And there's just more and more people moving to the Fishhook area, and then also Cedar Hills is expanding, as you know. So there's going to be more and more families there. We're going to see more and more kids riding bicycles and walking down that road, and it just seems so hazardous to me. It, does the department have a, a plan? Is there something in the hopper to do something about that and, and provide a safe place for bicyclists and pedestrians on that part of the road?
Through the mayor? Good news, yes. We have a reconstruction project for that very stretch. It will add capacity as necessary and put in separated pedestrian and bicycle facilities.
Okay. Assemblyperson McKee? Go ahead.
And yeah, another one. The, some of these maps, when you look at them, I can't, I have no idea what they are in relation to real life. So when I look at Higher Road, you know, where you've got that one, the alternate, I don't know if that's coming through my pasture, or if that's going to be now 42 blocks on the other side. How do, is there a map that actually shows where the places are in there? And if, so could I get it?
Through the mayor. I assume you're talking about that Parks Highway Alternative Project. There is a draft map on that project website that, it do a much better job than my presentation did to show you where all the eight potential candidates are.
Good. I have another one, talking about guardrails. That was on the second page of your presentation. Anybody who's ever driven that in the wintertime is in fear of their life every second. You go across railroad tracks, you're going towards Palmer, you go up the hill, and then, dear God, there's a drop off onto the railroad tracks. In my time there, which has been 30 years, I've seen cars upside down on the railroad tracks. Ever, are there going to be a guardrail there? I'm hoping that's in your.
I believe that's part of the, well, actually, it won't be part of that guardrail project because we're going to reconstruct that, that section of road, and you're going to be very happy with the results. But yeah, that's, that's the plan, is to reconstruct that whole section.
That's, I'm telling you, that, that is really up like the, maybe that's it. Oh, I know. All the work that's being put in on the, the alternate route, if we get the, the bridge across the arm, do we need all this stuff?
Through the mayor, I've been, I've been answering that question carefully by saying it certainly would help, but our, our view is that the alternative corridor project has its standalone utility. It's, it's worth doing. If it's worth doing, it's worth doing no matter whether the Knick Arm project were to happen or not.
Keeping an eye on it.
Okay.
I get a shot at you now. How about between the Palmer and let's say the Knick River Bridge? Our traffic's horrific out there. That road is way overused, and we got issues at Clark Wolverine, Smith, Maude, and Bodenburg, you know, Plumlee Road. And we got a phenomenon at the Bodenburg where people are stopping on a flashing yellow. And I'm kind of surprised we haven't ended a fatality there, but something needs done. And I called DOT several times on that. It's, it's, I see it all the time, you know, 55 mile an hour traffic, and they stop at a flashing yellow, so.
Through the mayor, I can, I can comment and basically say we don't have a project currently for that section of road, but we do, we are aware that, that there's, there's a need there and would encourage the body here in the Planning Commission to work with the department's planning group to nominate projects in that area.
Didn't we just have within this last year of fatality there at Lacy Mountain and?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and the Glen, the old Glen. Yeah. So it should bump it up a little bit, I guess. No? You know, comment. They're not going to commit to me. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Can you also give an update timeline as far as the connection between the?
Can you also give an update timeline as far as the connection between the Seward Meridian, where the four schools at, to your connection to the Bogart Road? Is that?
That's the Seward Meridian Phase Two project I had mentioned. We are really struggling hard to get that to bid for construction here this spring. So that's where we're at. It's all designed, it's pretty much ready to go. We're just polishing up a few last details.
So it will go out to bids and the actual construction time is expected?
Probably in the next two to three years, depending how quickly a contractor can get on it, if they were to bid out here this spring. It's a good, it's a big project.
Thank you, thank you.
Further questions or comments? We appreciate your coming and we appreciate you being on the hot seat and keeping your sense of humor.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Transportation Infrastructure Pack, Package 21 and 23. And I believe here comes some people with some presentations.
Madam Mayor, Chair Kandig, Members of Assembly and Planning Commission, good evening. My name's Tom Adams, I'm Public Works Director for Matsu Borough. Here to give you a quick update tonight for our transportation infrastructure projects. You can see the level of interest, obviously, with the presentation Clint gave. And I think you'll see some overlap in the projects DOT does and how's they relate to some of the projects that the Matsu Borough does. And I think, you know, I think Clint would agree, there's been a lot of progress made in the past year in interactions with DOT and recognizing how we can help one another, at least stay informed with what we have going on and, you know, and move forward in addressing what I think we all would recognize is a problem in Matsu Borough. You know, we've experienced tremendous growth and that growth is not, it's not going to stop anytime soon. It's gonna continue on the pathway that it is now and it has impacts in our transportations, in the means of increased traffic volumes, congestion, safety issues. So what is Matsu Borough doing about that, right? So we have our transportation infrastructure projects and that's what we'll be talking about tonight. I've got two staff members with me. I've got Cole Branham, he's a project manager in our project management division. He'll speak to what we're calling our TIP 21 package. And Brad Swartz is our division manager for our pre-design and engineering group. And he'll give you an update on the progress being made on our TIP 23 projects. So when we talk about the Matsu Borough's ability to address transportation projects, we really look at two different levels of our types of projects. I classify them, and they are classified, as non-area-wide and area-wide. Non-area-wide is traditionally associated with our road service area projects across our 16 different road service areas in the borough. Not speaking to that tonight, those are typically the local type of roads and controlled in a different manner. What we're really talking about is our, is the area-wide type projects given to the borough through its transportation system powers. And really to deal with projects that are more, that the higher level type projects of roadways are functionally classified collectors above. Brad will speak to that in a little bit more depth. And historically, the borough has dealt with these types of projects through propositions, you know, formerly known as road bonds. Those have been around for a while, we'll recognize the term. You know, starting about 2008, we've had somewhere on the order of six different iterations of these road bond packages, 2008, 11, 13, 15, 18, and the current version of 21. With the exception of 2015, all of those went to the voters for approval. And in every case, when they made it to the voters, they've actually been approved. So you can see this is something that the voters have a high level of support for to, you know, to be willing to participate in the cost and improve in our transportation system and address the issues that we have. Just as a side note, the 2015 package apparently didn't make it past the Assembly at the time, so. So we got our 2021 package, that's our most recent right now. And I would say, in, you know, while we have those, those select, you know, those bond packages in the past, there's been varying levels of success. Even though they've been approved by the voters, not in every case have there been success in getting the projects that were approved completed. And there's a variety of reasons, but mostly they come back to the match. Iterations of those bond packages relied on state matches and differing levels, anywhere between a 50-50 to somewhere close to 100. And as you can imagine, if the match doesn't come through, the projects don't go forward. And so as we reflect on the history, the bond packages, some of them have had projects nominated, pushed forward, and just had nothing happen to them. And some have been fairly successful to actually push forward. So that being said, in November of 21, the Matsu Borough residents passed the Transportation Infrastructure Program 2021 to prioritize improvement projects that meet our community demands. So Cole Branham, as I said, is our project manager. He is overseeing our TIP 21 package. He'll speak to the 20, to the TIP 21. We'll come back and talk about TIP 23. And then we'll conclude our presentation with a kind of a summary of what the two programs do for one another.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Assembly, Planning Commission. My name's Cole Branham, I'm project manager for Public Works Department. And I'm gonna give you guys an update on the Transportation Infrastructure Program 2021. So here on our first slide, we have a roadmap for the TIP 21 package. So in November of 2021, the voters approved the TIP 21 package, which consisted of 20 projects, three of which were either grants, fund transfers, or matches for projects for other agencies. And then 17 of those projects were actually managed by the Matsu Borough. So the winter following the voter approval of the TIP 21 package, we put out RFPs and started getting designers on board to do our design. So in the spring and summer, we could go out there and complete our field investigations and begin our designs. In the summer of 2022, we also constructed the Nelson Road Pathway Project. So that was a mile-long pathway on Nelson Road that went to Machontas Elementary School. We were able to complete that project because we already had a completed plan set. So we were able to pull it off the shelf and put it out to bid for construction. And that project is part of the pedestrian projects, which is a bigger package that we will continue into 2023, this year's construction. The remainder of this roadmap shows the planned construction projects for each year, so 23, 24, and 25. As you can see, we've somewhat evenly distributed these projects throughout the years to distribute the workload. Also, some of these projects are taking a little longer to develop than others, so it allows us to work through that. I'm gonna rearrange these slides just a little bit. So progress to date, so all 17 of the MSB managed projects are in design or have been completed. Funds have been transferred to the City of Wasilla for the multimodal depot project and to DOT for the Seward Meridian Tambert Signal on their Seward Meridian project, which is supposed to start construction this year. So that'll provide a signal at the intersection with Career Tech and Teeland Middle School, give a safe location for pedestrians across going between the schools on that project. We also applied for the DOT Transportation's Alternative Program, also known as TAP, to use the $4.5 million allocated for the Palmer-Fish Hook Separated Pathway as a match. And you guys should see legislation for that coming to you guys later this month. We constructed the Nelson Road Pathway Project, which is one of the Safe House to School projects I mentioned earlier. And then we are preparing for the 2023 construction bidding season. Okay, so now I'm gonna talk a little bit about costs. So as we were able to go out and complete our field investigations and develop our designs a little bit more, we were able to prepare more detailed cost estimates. So this package, when it was originally prepared, was a 61, a little over a $61 million project. Our current estimates are over $101 million to complete this package in full. And that's due to a variety of reasons. Some of those are cost inflation, some of those are, you know, conditions varying from what was assumed in the original estimates. And I'll get into some details on that a little bit later in this presentation. So we do have $68 million in funding for this package. 38 million of that is coming from state grants. So we have two grants there, a $30 million grant and an $8 billion grant. And then we have $30 million from area-wide funding to fund these projects. We also anticipate needing around $1.8 million from the RSAs as a contribution to help round out our construction funding for what we have planned. But that still leaves us with about $31.5 million of this package unfunded. So Public Works and MSB's goal is to complete as much of each of these projects as practical. So we're gonna do that a variety of ways, you know, looking at adjusting our scopes, phasing the projects, and other design considerations that we can implement to maximize the use of the funding that we do have for these projects. So now I'm gonna go into some of the challenges we've had with these projects, highlight a few projects and walk through them. So the first one I have up here is Hidden Hills Road Reconstruction. So this project serves a large residential area in the Caswell area and is the only road in and out of this subdivision. So it serves kind of as a choke point. So when we went out and did our field investigations and did our geotechnical borings, we found that there was pretty poor subgrade material out there. So that requires a larger structural section, more gravel, and some other design considerations such as drainage improvements that increase our costs. Also, when we did our culvert inventory, we found one of the culverts was actually a fish passage culvert mapped by Department of Fish and Game. So that comes with increased design cost permitting and construction costs. So those things contributed to the cost increase on this project, along with, you know, just the overall cost inflation. So this project, when it was originally estimated, was at $3.6 million. And our current estimates are at $9.2 million for the entire project. So we are looking at phasing this project into multiple phases. So the first phase we're looking at doing will be from the Parks Highway to Caswell Lakes Road. That is the stretch of road that is the one way in and one way out of that subdivision, essentially the bottleneck for it. So we do want to upgrade that portion of the road and then improve the fish passage on the project. Then we'll have additional phases to construct the rest of the roadway. It will probably look like two different phases and those are currently unfunded. On the next project on, any question?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
How many miles of that will be?
So that'll be, it'll be a little over a mile of road and then the fish passage.
Okay, so there won't be seven or eight miles total, or I mean, this year?
No, no. So the road is just under four miles total. So we'll upgrade the first earthly mile of that road.
Thank you.
Yep. So the next project.
Just a minute, sir. Assemblyperson two, go ahead.
Isn't there alternative financing available for fish passage culverts?
Yes, there are. There are some programs available for fish passage culvert. They're usually based on a rating system that Department of Fish and Game puts out and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, based on the need for fish passage. And how they're rated, they have a rating system from, it's a red, yellow, green rating system that they have for these culverts.
Yes, go ahead, sir, follow up.
Okay, so if you're saying we need a fish passage culvert here and we're doing this road project, we don't automatically get to pull funding from other places for the fish passage culvert, even though we want it for this? We have to pay through our other funding?
Yes, we wouldn't be able to automatically pull it. There are ways that you can apply for these programs. On the Department of Fish and Game website, they actually rate all these culverts. You can get on there, it's an interactive mapper, so you can see how these are rated. I don't believe this culvert would rate very high in the fish passage grant programs that I'm aware of.
And it sounds like we just need a regular culvert.
Through the mayor, some member twos, you know, I think what needs to be clarified, so you're absolutely correct. Where additional funds do, through federal sources or otherwise, can be acquired for fish passage? We have done so. For instance, we recently completed this past season a fish passage culvert on a segment of Hidden Hills roadway that did use those grant funds. What we're talking about here is a fish passage culvert further down the alignment that doesn't rank high on the Fish and Wildlife's criteria for replacing as a fish passage culvert. But we have a structural deficiency on the culvert itself. In effect, the top of the culvert is failing and there's holes in it that we're at risk of potentially the road falling through the culvert that we prioritize as fixing and repairing. And so there's a difference in how the prioritize of that culvert is in the funding source. So the fish passage grant funds through Fish and Wildlife, it doesn't rate the red dot that they would have as a priority. But I'd certainly be remiss if we had a vehicle fall through the top of a culvert that we didn't take care of in this first phase of the project.
Go ahead, sir.
Sure, I understand. But I would think that if we are gonna build a road and there is, and that is a fish passage culvert that needs to be there, it sure seems like we could get a hold of Fish and Game and say, hey, this may not be your number one priority, but since we're already building the road, it sure would be nice to get it done now versus later. I'm just saying that. And that's not available to us, you're saying? That kind of.
Through the mayor. So the conversation's been had. This is, there are other higher prioritized culverts across this borough that the agency has dedicated funds to. And this one, we, it's actually, the culvert itself is not in the segment of the road that we're going to, you know, the first mile. It's further down the alignment, you know, so it would not be repaired as part of the next segment or the third segment or whatever segment, you know, is in our future. But we have no other identified mechanisms to repair that culvert in the near future, including the grant funding, because it's just not of a priority for them to dedicate their funds to go fix this.
And I guess one point to clarify that, we will upgrade a short segment of road on both sides of that culvert. So our additional phases will just tie onto that, so we're not doubling our work, I guess, over that segment. All right, so the next project I have on here is the Caswell Lakes Road, Bendapool Road, Pass the Bait and Lost a Spinner Street project. So this project was originally allocated $800,000 out of the original estimate for this project. And to be quite frank, that was not enough funding for this project. It is, this project is also in the Caswell area, I guess I forgot to mention that. It is about 3.5 miles long. Some of it can be paved with a little bit of work and some of it needs a full rebuild before we could pave the road. So we are looking at phasing this project as well and it will go out for construction. Phase one will go out for construction this year. 49 State Street Pathway. So this is a pedestrian pathway project that connects the facilities on the Palmer-Wasilla Highway to Bogart Road. It's identified as a Safe House to School project in the, for the Colony Schools. So with this, we had two alternatives to look at, putting the pathway on the east side or the west side of the road. The west side of the road had less utilities and was a little more open. But the east side of the road had the majority of the housing and users of this pathway. So ultimately, we decided to put the pathway on the east side. The east side's considered a safer location for this because there's less uncontrolled pedestrian crossings. You know, folks going from their neighborhoods trying to cross 49 State Street to get to the pathway. So we're looking at reducing the construction width, what we can do to reduce the construction width of our design to reduce our impacts to utilities and right away, so we can build this project. So this project was estimated at $1 million on the TIP 21 original estimate and we're at $2.4 million for this project. And even though it exceeds our TIP 21 budget, we do intend to fully construct this project with TIP 21 dollars. Next project I have on here.
Sir, can I ask you a couple of questions before you go on? So even though on 49th Street, the majority of the houses are on the east side, as you stated, but I would anticipate that the majority of the pedestrian usage is gonna be to Colony, which is on the west side. So they're gonna have to cross the street someplace. So what is the plans then to get the pedestrians? So, what is the plans then to get the pedestrians probably to? You probably know more, but from just looking at it as an observer, that would seem like, to me, it would be, you know, they're going to have to get to the high school and the junior high somewhere. So, what's the plan for that?
Yeah, so there are already marked pedestrian crossings at the roundabout there, so that would be where they would cross. So, they'd follow the pathway that came out of the subdivision to Bogart Road and cross at the marked pedestrian crossings at the roundabout. And the same, if they, for some reason, they were going the other way, there's marked pedestrian crossings at the signal for Forty-Ninth State Street and Palmer-Wassilla Highway.
Okay, and if you did the pedestrian pathway on the west side, would you be closer to the million dollars that was original estimated for this project?
We would be a little closer, but it would still exceed the budget pretty significantly.
And what would that be?
I would have to get back to you on that. I do have, we do have those numbers, I just don't have them with me today.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to know that number. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, all right. I'm, go ahead. Oh, yes, go ahead.
If we have pedestrian crosswalks, I would much rather see them a long ways away from the roundabout than right in the roundabout. It's kind of like very busy when you're driving in a roundabout than it is when you're just driving down a straight road, you know?
Assembly person hours, go ahead.
I just appreciate the mayor's question. I've been following this one, and it's a sticky wicket because the kids are going to need to get across to that housing, and you could put an overpass, you could put an underpass, but you know, the human nature is to find the easiest way across. So, like how we safely get the kids across there is a real challenge. And we could move it away from the roundabout, but then there's a safety consideration, and once the kids get up to that roundabout, if you go past it, they're going to, they're going to go over because they're not going to walk further and then come back. So, yeah, anyway, it's just been following that, and it's a challenge because we got the houses on the one side and the schools on the other and how you get those kids across. I mean, at least a path will improve things a little bit. I've driven that and seen kids walking from the school in blowing snowy, cold conditions where you can't see very well, and they're right on the side of the road there, so. Wish I had a magic wand.
Assembly person two, go ahead.
Could I? Okay, yes. A tunnel's a great idea because it'd be a lot more fun, but how about fencing so that they were, like we do for the moose, so they're not supposed to cross except in the places that we tell them? Is that part of the plan maybe? Because it'd sure eliminate a lot of, you know, running back and forth where they're not supposed to.
Fencing between the pathway and the road, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so you can't just cross anywhere. You have to go down the fence until you find a hole in it.
We could consider that.
It might work.
Further questions, comments? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so moving on to Edgerton Parks Road and Mountain Trails Drive. So, this project has some challenging terrain. So, this, the Mountain Trails Drive portion of this project goes up fairly steep terrain. We cross several streams. So, we're putting a pathway on that project, so, you know, and a couple of those are fish passage streams identified by Department of Fish and Game. So, that is, that's a challenge we have to work through. And then the larger challenge we have is crossing the Little Susitna River. So, the existing bridge there is not, the width is not adequate to comfortably or safely accommodate pedestrians on it. So, it is, we are looking at pedestrian bridge options to cross the Little Susitna River, which our original estimate for that project was two-point-eight million, and our current estimate is five-point-eight. So, we are looking at phasing this project. So, Phase One would be upgrading Edgerton Parks Road and constructing the pathway from Palmer Fish Hook to up Mountain Trails Drive to GPR, Government Peak Recreational Area. And then Phase Two would be looking at a pedestrian bridge option across the Little Susitna River. This project, completed in conjunction with the Palmer-Fish Hook Separated Pathway Project, which we applied for the TAP funding, would complete a pretty impressive pedestrian pathway network extending from the Glen Highway all the way up to GPR and also connecting into Trunk Road. So, this is, the pedestrian bridge portion of this project is not funded, but we do intend to upgrade the road and construct the pathway.
So, can I stop you again, please? So, the, because there is no pedestrian walkway on Palmer-Fish Hook, right, anyplace? Is there? There's none, I don't think.
On Palmer-Fish Hook? Currently, no.
Yeah, right. And so, when do you, when is the plans, or I know that's probably a state question, but what are...
Yeah, I'd have to refer to the state for that.
Mayor, can I take that one? So, there was a four-point-five-million-dollar allotment in TIP-21 for a Palmer-Fish Hook pathway. We evaluated that and said, you know, we recognized pretty quickly, we're not going to be able to get what we want out of four-point-five million. So, the State Department of Transportation opened up a Transportation Alternative Program, not project nominations, and we've been talking to DOT for months about using, and I think Tom alluded to this, to using the four-point-five-million dollars in TIP-21 as a match for federal funding to construct a pathway along Palmer-Fish Hook, so the state would end up constructing it, but then it would tie into Edgerton Parks and complete the connection. So, we, instead of putting out a design and trying to construct it ourselves, we kind of put a pause on that and said that could be match funding so that we can go out and multiply it and do a lot more and get a much better network out of it. So, we're going to move forward with the Edgerton Parks project while we're pursuing this TAP nomination, and we've talked to DOT, they've been very supportive. We think it'll score pretty well, and that legislation, I think, is coming before the Assembly next week. So, that's the plan with the four-point-five million, but the Palmer-Fish Hook pathway was part of TIP-21 as well. It's just, we knew four-point-five wasn't going to get us very far, and we saw an opportunity to multiply it with some of this federal funding and do more.
Right, yeah, because as was stated earlier, I think by somebody, I think maybe one of the Assembly people, there, oh, no, Commissioner, there is no walkway even to get to Palmer-Fish Hook, you know, say from downtown Palmer or wherever. So, when you start the pedestrian, you know, pathway from the Glen Highway and the Palmer-Fish Hook, how are people supposed to get there? You know, so, yeah, it seems like to me there needs to be some more discussion.
There does, but there, Madam Mayor, you also have the pathway along Trunk Road. So, there is access from, you know, from Palmer, down Bogart, up Trunk Road to get to Palmer-Fish Hook with a pathway. So, there is an existing connection. Right now, that pathway ends at Valley Country Store there at Palmer-Fish Hook and Trunk. So, that's the idea. So, worst case, you could still connect via Trunk even if you can't get all the way down to the Glen Highway, and there's still access to the Glen Highway by going down Trunk and out Bogart.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, next project I was talking about is the Shawl Elementary School Access Project. So, this, this project, or the purpose of this project is to alleviate the congestion at the Shawl Elementary School site. So, that, when this project was originally proposed, it was proposed as a left turn lane on Wassilla Fish Hook. So, our designers are currently looking at a traffic study for this, and in that, they found that a left turn lane on Wassilla Fish Hook doesn't provide any meaningful improvement to the level of service for that intersection. So, level of service is basically the wait time at the intersection, which results in congestion. So, we're taking a step back, a little broader look at this, to look at some different alternatives and solutions to fix the congestion issue here, such as alternative connection points to provide different, different access to the school, and then also intersection improvements such as a signal or roundabout on this project. So, it was originally proposed at five-hundred-thousand dollars for this project, which is not enough funding for any of the alternatives that I just suggested. So, we are progressing with the traffic study and design, but we do not have construction funding with TIP-21. However, it is one of the projects that's proposed on TIP-23 for construction funding. So, if we progress with this, and then if that goes through, that is a potential opportunity to fund the improvements of this project. And this site, you know, already has congestion issues, and there is a proposed plan to add a charter school to this site, which would compound the issue of congestion at that school. So, I think this is an important improvement for that site. And Brad and Tom will talk a little bit more about the TIP-23 process after this.
I'm glad to hear that we're talking about slowing down on Shawl. I'm pretty good friends with the principal and one of the teachers there, and they've looked at the current idea, and they, they think it's actually going to possibly make it worse because people would be trying to get out across that turn lane and stuff. So, even if it means that it has to go to TIP-23 or what do we have to do, I am glad to hear that we're, we're taking another look at that, so, thank you.
Yes, Assembly person McKee, go ahead.
So, when you're looking at that, whatever page it is, it has the thirty-one-million, five-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar shortfall. Do you, and I'm sure you do, have a list of, okay, which one falls off the charts if we can't, we can't fund it?
Yeah, I'll get to that a little bit later in our slide, but one of your, one of your items in your packet does cover that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next one I have here is Inkstrom Road to Trunk Road Corridor. So, the purpose of this project is to increase the capacity of the Fish Hook area network by providing a connection from Inkstrom Road to Trunk Road. So, this project was originally proposed as a connection on the southern end of Inkstrom, a short connection over to Trunk Road. Due to the proximity to the roundabout, we are considering additional alternatives for this and the roundabout, the Inkstrom Road Bogart Roundabout that DOT is working on, because the original route may not provide the utility or function that was originally proposed for that alternative, just because it's so close. So, we are looking at additional alternatives and routes for that. So, we have two routes identified, the southern route that I just described, and then a northern route that we believe may provide better connectivity and improve the access for the Fish Hook area, or the, yeah, the Fish Hook area off of Inkstrom Road. So, that, that project was originally budgeted at two-point-five-million dollars out of the estimate, and we, regardless of the alternative, we're far exceeding that. The northern route, which we do, do think will provide better connectivity for the area, is estimated at thirteen-point-six million dollars for that project. So, Inkstrom Road to Trunk Road Corridor, and then the Point McKenzie Road Reconstruction, which isn't on this, but I'll touch on it a little bit. These two projects contribute the most to that thirty-one-point-five-million-dollar overage on this package. So, Point McKenzie Road, mile post zero to seven, that project has a lot of similar issues to Hidden Hills Road Reconstruction, poor subgrade materials requiring additional structural section and design considerations. We're also looking at widening, widening the shoulders out there, so that project is going to take more funding to complete. And we are, we're looking at phasing that project, and we're hoping to go out for Phase One in 2024 after DOT completes their earthquake repairs on Point McKenzie Road, which they are, they put that out for bid this summer and are going out to, I believe they're going to complete construction this year.
I don't think we, I don't think we have that on our list.
Yeah, that, that one wasn't on my slide, but it is in the packet, which I'll get to in a minute, that the Transportation Infrastructure Program 2021, it is in that packet.
Okay, so, on the Inkstrom Road to Trunk Road, do we need, right, do we have any right-of-way there? Is there any?
Nope, that is a completely new alignment, so we don't have any right-of-way regardless of the alignment that we choose. That'll be a full acquisition.
Okay, all right. I think lots of people are waiting to sort of see, because the back part of that, whether it would be north or south or both, I'm going to have our Meister's property?
The southern route is, the northern route is not.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any question? Yes, Assembly person two.
On the Point Mack job?
Yep.
So, my understanding is, is that even all the damage that was caused by the 2018, that hasn't been all repaired yet?
No, correct. That is part of the work that, or that is the work that DOT is contracted to do this summer. So, 2023, they're supposed to complete those earthquake repairs, and if that gets completed, we are shooting to go out to construction in 2024 with our improvements.
So, that'd be all the culvert problems and then all the cracking in the pavement?
Maybe not all the problems, but yeah, the ones they identified as earthquake damage, and I'm not intimately familiar with all those sites, but it is available online.
Available online.
Assembly person McKee, Assembly person McKee, your mic is on, or you get yours?
That's all right, no problem. I just didn't want to ignore you. Anyone else, any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to 2023 construction. So, we have six projects planned for construction this year. The first of those is the Cherry Lake Drive, Karen Avenue, and King Arthur Drive Project. This project's located in the city of Houston and serves a large residential subdivision in there. And although it is located in the city of Houston, you know, it does, borough roads do funnel to this road to access the highway, so there is benefit to borough residents as well as the city of Houston for this project. The next project we plan for construction this year is the pedestrian projects. So, that is five sites and six schools.
Who's ever on the phone? Can you please mute your phone? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it's five sites, six schools. So, that's Big Lake Elementary, Colony Middle School, Denine Elementary, and Reddington Junior Senior High School, Larson Elementary, and Talkeetna Elementary. This is all, these are all identified on the Safe Route to Schools Plan and is part of the package that include Nelson Road Pathway that we constructed last summer. Then we have the Hidden Hills Reconstruction Phase One. I described that to you guys earlier, that's that bottleneck section in the fish passage. Phase One Construction, same with Caswell Lakes Paving, that's out. Phase One Construction, we're looking at paving Caswell Lakes Road, which it's around two miles of paving, so it's still a significant improvement for the area and a lot of paving for that subdivision. Then we have the Trunk Connector Catherine Drive Project. So, this project, the purpose of it is to improve access to schools. So, we have Pioneer Peak Elementary School there, and then we have the proposed Matsu Central School. So, this road will be a connection from Trunk Road to Stringfield Road. And this, the project is currently at ninety-five percent design and is over at DOT for review so we can get the approach road permit, and then once we have that, we'll wrap up our bid documents and put this project out to bid. And there's currently a turn lane on Trunk Road for this intersection, and the right-of-way has been cleared for that. And the last project I have on here is the Lakes Boulevard Upgrade. So, this project was originally proposed as the full length of the road from Beaver Lake Road all the way to Devil's Club Place, which is almost to Big Lake. We quickly realized that we did not have enough funding to do this full stretch of road, so we worked with the administration to reduce this project down to the worst section of the road. So, that, that ended up being about the first two miles, it's a little less than two miles of that road. And if you've ever driven West Lakes Boulevard, you know the stretch I'm talking about. So, we are, we are planning to go out to construction with that this year, and that'll wrap up our 2023 construction.
Oh, yes, Assembly person two, go ahead.
Through the mayor. So, starting with Cherry Lakes Drive and Karen Avenue and King Arthur Drive, is that similar to, is the budget that we thought it would be, is that similar to what you're still staying with?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
And that is two points.
So, it is, I have it here, three-point-five million.
And then at MSB, this pedestrian projects, are they, do they seem like they're on track to what you thought they might cost?
Yes, very close.
And then the Hidden Hills?
No, Hidden Hills is not, so we are phasing that project.
And you thought it was going to be how much?
Well, what was on the TIP-21 package was three-point-six million.
And it ended up being what?
Our current estimate is nine-point-two for the full road.
Did the Assembly member pick that three-point-six million for that project?
I, I'm not sure. I don't have that background.
We sure seem to be far, far away from that three-point-six to nine-point-two. And then, okay, how about the Caswell Lakes?
So, that, that project was around, I think it was eight-hundred-thousand dollars in the TIP-21 estimate, and we are at around three million for the full project. That's not what we're spending, you know, that we're, we're phasing the construction of that. Same with Hidden Hills.
Okay, can you go ahead and give me the last two? Trunk, the Trunk Connector?
Trunk Connector, so, that one was at two-point-five million on the estimate, and we're looking at around one-point-seven, so we're coming in under on that one.
I like that. Okay, and then, go ahead, and then Lakes was that, we, we estimated to something, right? I like that. Okay, and then go ahead. And then Lakes was that, we, we, we estimated to something, right? And we just, what you did is you shrunk the project and absorbed the money. That's what happened, right?
Yeah, well, we're, we're still going to use those funds, but we shrunk the project down. Because the full project, we didn't, we didn't even go into design looking at that full project, but it would have far exceeded that 2.5 million.
Yeah, so we budgeted 2.5, and now you're, and, and the project's going to be done for 2.5, but we basically half the length of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Further questions, comments? All ready? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so included in your packets this evening is the Transportation Infrastructure Program. It's this, this packet here. So it, the purpose of this document is to list out the details of, of the costs, the schedules, and describe the projects.
Sir, can I interrupt you? I missed the deputy mayor, and he had a comment, so.
I apologize. I've been saving my questions till the end of this package, and I didn't realize we're moving on to the next one. So there were a couple of questions in regards to this. So right now, we've got 68 in funding available. We're short 31. If you back up to page two, and by the way, this is an awesome presentation. Thank you very much. So you roll through 22, 23, 24, 25. Are we allowed to use the 68 to keep going in progression, or do we have to allocate a certain percentage of that to each percentage of, you know what I mean? Do we got to worry about the 2025 projects right now funding wise, or can we hold those, solve the problem before then? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so my understanding is we have, we have the $68 million, and, and we have that amount to work with. So if we spend it all early, then we don't have any funding for those projects towards the end, which some of those projects, they take a little bit longer because we need right of way, but they are big projects, you know, such as like Tex Al.
The three at the end from 2025, do we have an estimate on what those three would be? I'm just trying to see if we just keep spending the money as we go where we're going to run short, like which ones we can't do.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of what we're taking a look at, this packet that I'm about to go through. We, we took a look at, at least the estimates we have. We don't have fully updated estimates for every project, Tex Al and Fern. We're still working on developing those. But we have taken the estimates we do have and plugged them into this to program out, to make sure that we don't overspend early in the package to where we can't complete the, the projects at the end. So that's part of why we're phasing some of these projects. Or if they just are far exceeding, like the Shaw or the Inkstrom, you know, we're not looking at funding construction with this package, just because that would just eat up the.
We won't run short. We got money laying around. We'll be all right.
Through the mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
So remember, I mean, that's, that's a great question, because we've been challenged with this as well. You know, we recognize as we move forward that, you know, for a variety of reasons, the projects that were brought forward and approved by the voters, we just don't have money to complete them as envisioned at that time. And, and so what do you do? Do you honor the system and try to move forward every project in the best way possible, which might mean just doing a bit of the project and not the whole project as, as, as we thought? Or do we do all of the project as originally expected and run out of money to do the projects that are, that have great utility to our transportation system, you text out. But we're not going to get to that project until the last end of our, our spending spree, if you put it that way. And, and so, you know, we, we're at risk if we go forward and just do every project and spend the dollars in today versus what they're expected to do, you know, when they're estimated back in 17, 18, 19. We're, we're not going to have the funds available unless, unless this body, and, and that's part of this presentation, and through your consideration as it come forward, we decide that we will just complete projects in the next couple of years and use other venues like the 23 package to, to defer those projects until some point in the future. But we also know, if I might, that we are actively moving forward on every one of those projects and using tip $21 to do so.
Thank you. That's, that's great news. I, the good news is we got budget season upon us, and I've already got two amendments in my head that'll help solve some of those problems. So it, I mean, obviously, we all wish we weren't in this situation, but I don't, I don't think this is anything that we can't come to a, that we can't fix in a timely manner. So I've got some more good questions, but I respectfully for you, I'd like to save them until after your next package. I didn't know that you were going to go through each one individually. Thank you.
No, I'm not going to go through each one individually, but I will speak to this.
Yeah, if I may, real quick, so to Tom's point and what you're seeing here, like what Cole's talking about with this package, is you're seeing the development of a program. In the past, the borough would come up every maybe three, five, seven years. There was no plan. And, and I'm not criticizing or faulting anyone. It's just the nature of being a second-class borough and not having area-wide road powers. So you don't have the ability to even go out and do a preliminary design on any of these projects. Staff have to kind of throw a dart at the wall, hope you get close. You don't have any geotech. You don't have any preliminary engineering. So you're having to make these estimates, kind of to Mr. Two's point about, well, you know, why are they so radically different in some cases? Because you're sitting at a desk trying to make that determination without doing any fieldwork. So we're hoping, and what Cole's built here is great, because it starts to connect the dots, almost like the Transportation Improvement Program or the STIP at the state level, how they carry these projects out over time. So what we talked about is, you know, we put, we put before the voters a proposition that said, we're going to do work on these projects. We're going to do work on every one of those projects. And that's kind of the point to phasing or reducing scope is so that you don't just blow through all the money in the projects that are closer to construction than the ones that have to go through more detailed right of way permitting, et cetera. So we're going to honor that and make sure that that gets done. But, and this is not uncommon or uncharacteristic from what's happened in the past. Like when we built Selden Road back in 2014, 15, that was Phase One. Selden Road Phase Two is now a project that's with the state through the Community Transportation Program. So we have ways to connect the dots and continue to work out to see it all the way through. But we want to make sure what we put before the voters, we get done, well, you know, to some degree, the, I think you said as practicable, what we can. And that feeds into what Tom's going to talk about and Brad in a minute with tip 23 and kind of what's next. And so I think this is an evolution, and I commend Cole. I mean, this is a great document. When I first saw it, I go, okay, this is the best I've seen from the borough in terms of laying out what we want to do and how we want to go about doing it, and start putting more rigor towards how we develop cost estimates so that we can rein in the variance, if that makes sense.
No, yeah, those, those are great points, and I, I appreciate that. I'm. It, it does make it difficult for you guys when we're a second-class borough, and you can't be working on a project without the voters' permission to do that. And so I can see where some of these, I mean, some of this is just inflation, let's be honest, right? These estimates that we came up together in 17, 18, 19, they're not, they're not realistic today, even if it was a great job by whoever did it at that time. So I'm sympathetic to that. I'm glad we're a second-class borough. It requires us to slow down and ask the permission of the voters. I guess we can't just rush through it as quickly, but in the long run, I think that's a good thing. We've got some great legislative priorities right now, too. We're asking for state participation on some stuff this year and some amendments. So I would just encourage you to keep taking each project on like you're going to finish it and it's full. And I believe the Assembly will solve this problem during the budget season this year. So, thanks.
Yes, Assemblyperson McKee?
I'll go first. Okay, thank you. On the Lakes Boulevard Upgrade, since you're going to be looking basically at the first two miles, at two and a half million, what was the reason for having the whole thing? Because we got like a bridge to nowhere, and we got a railroad extension to nowhere. And what, does this actually, was it supposed to end up somewhere and accomplish something by going all the way to the end? Or, or why are we doing it if we can't do the whole thing?
I believe, so the whole road, it's, it's not in great condition, but the, the first stretch of that road is in pretty bad condition. And that, it leads to the South Shore, I guess, of Big Lake. So there's a residential subdivision there. So it's a collector-level road for that subdivision.
So it is, it has a destination at the end of that two, two mile?
Correct, yeah, it's existing road.
Did you have a question? Yeah, Assemblyperson two, go ahead.
Okay, so what, what I'd like to say is that I, I, I hear what you just said, Mike. And if, if, if truly that's what we're doing, and then the next, these next times that we put an estimate along something, then I feel that it should be close to that. For you to say it's a million and it comes out that it's 6 million, then I don't want the person in the office giving me that estimate. My whole life, if I said to somebody, I'm going to do it for $100, I don't get to do the job and then charge them 400. And I think it's fair to the people that if we're going to budget something and we put lists down, that you don't sit in the office and you don't sit on a computer, that you actually do put boots on the ground, so you come up with a fair estimate. And yes, there's, I'm not saying that it can't vary, but from, you know, 2 million to 6 million or whatever, I got some numbers in here, right? That shouldn't ever happen. So I appreciate you seeing that there's been a problem with that and that you're willing, that you're addressing it and you're moving forward. So I say thank you.
Yes, Newt, go ahead. Assemblyperson.
Out of these, this list that we have, the tip 21, are they already, any of them gone out for the bidding yet or not?
So the only, only project we've completed is the Nelson Road Pathway Project. So I believe you're looking at page four of this packet. And so that would be, let's see, let me find it on here. So that would be, it'd be the third one from the bottom there. Nelson Road Pathway 35472-1819A. That project's been completed.
But the, the rest of them are going to be up for bidding, or they're already?
Yeah, so if you go back to the second slide in my slideshow, you can see the projects that are going to bidding this year, and then 24 and 25. So about six, or six of these projects will go out to construction this year.
And so those have been already allocated to a contractor, right?
Not yet. They will go out to bid this.
They will go out.
Yep, yeah, very soon.
And you spread them apart when you, you know, give them out for the bids, or like one at a time type of thing?
Yeah, so we'll stagger them, so all the bids don't open on the same day. So starting, you know, next week, I think we'll have our first bid go out, and then after that, we'll be staggering bids until we get all six of those projects out.
Yeah, because I think that's important, because you can't expect, you know, a company to bid on so many of them. But if, you know, you want to give them space, and they know if they didn't get this one, that they can continue bidding, because, you know, on the smaller contractor, especially the side of things.
Yep, yeah, you're correct. And, and that, and we are thinking about that. We are also working with purchasing to put us, just a rough schedule out. So everyone can understand kind of when, when we're planning to advertise these projects.
Yeah, that would be, I think, good for contractors to, to know about it, and then they'll know when's this one coming and things. That way they submit in time, and if they got the results that they didn't get it, they can go a little, maybe more aggressive on the next one. That gives us advantage to possibly for them to, by trying to get a job, maybe they'll give us a better price, I guess.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so back to this package or packet here we have. So in page four of this packet, we do have every project, all 20 projects listed in the tip 21 package. And we do show the estimate of dollars that we plan to spend out of that 68 million plus the 1.5 for RSA contribution on there. And then we have the future phases as another column, so you can see how much for each project we believe we have unfunded. So this, this paints a really good picture of, of, of what we have funded and what we don't have funded. And then following that table, we have a page dedicated to each project. So on that page, we have some basic project details, description, length, road service area, Assembly District, cost estimate, those sort of details on there. And then we have a table, and this table shows the five phases of a project, so preliminary engineering, design, right of way, utilities and construction. And when we plan to, or the schedule for that. So there's, there's a year for, there's the years on there, and then it shows how much resources we plan to allocate to each phase each year for these projects until they're complete. So you can kind of track the project from start to finish and how we're going, and how we'll get to construction. Underneath that, we have a map that just shows the project extents for each project. And for the projects that are phased, we do have concepts on there of what the phasing will look like. So you can see on our maps kind of what we think the, the phasing will be. And as we finish up our designs, we will, we will refine those to fit within our budgets, so we don't exceed that 68 million that we have. And this packet will be available on the website very soon, which leads me to my next slide. We do have a website live for the tip 21 projects. You can find it at tip21.matsugov.us. Also, if you go to the borough's homepage, on the top bar, there's a dropdown for projects in development. And then if you drop that down and click on 2021 Transportation Infrastructure Program, it'll take you to this page. So once you get to this page, there's an overview, describes the package, what we're trying to achieve with the package, and gives a little background. And then below that, there's an, actually an interactive map where you can see all of the projects, where they're located in the borough. And there's a list of projects on the side, so you can click on a project if you don't know where it is, and it will zoom right into the project. Below that, we have some, the basic information for the project, description, schedule, estimate. And then below that, we have contact information. So if folks have questions, they can get ahold of somebody at Public Works, and we can help answer their questions. So this is a great tool. We're excited to roll this out. Great, great way to engage with the public. Give them somewhere to look at these projects and then contact information if they want to reach out for additional details. And with that.
Mayor, I'm always looking for, you know, lessons learned, and this is, this is a big cost. I mean, 100 million is, is, that's kind of like eight or nine mils these days. And, you know, we're getting a lot of help from the state, but if we're putting 60 million of our own borough cash into it, that's five mils on the taxpayer. So just kind of like, are there things we can be doing to lessen our costs in the future? Like, there's nothing we can do now about these, but, you know, I look at a couple of these, like the Shaw Elementary, and I think, man, why? Why are we coming in after the fact on that instead of building these schools with the traffic flow in mind, knowing we're growing? And then Inkstrom is a classic. We let all the subdivisions go in on that. And it, it's just like, you know, that, that intersection is five years overdue, and we got people literally getting hurt or killed at it. And, you know, could we have thought about that when those were going in and, and looked at the right of ways out at the top or getting that done? So I just am trying to look at this, and I know we've got the Long Range Transportation Plan. I know we worked on the subdivision construction manual. So when we're plating, we're looking at access and things like that. But I know we've also talked about getting ahead on right of way purchases, or, you know, not having to pay extra dollars when we, when we need it, when we're, we're in the crunch. I just, are there other things that we could be thinking about or that the, that as a staff you're thinking about to help us reduce costs in the future? Because we know it costs us more to come in after the fact than to be ahead of the game a little bit.
Yeah, so actually, I think what Brad and Tom are going to talk about here with tip 23 will really help with that. You know, developing this program so we can come in with a better cost estimate, you know, because I think the, the cheapest time to do anything is now. You know, costs seem to just go up, so if we can be a little more accurate with our, with our packages, I think we could get more done. Would, would help with that, certainly.
Okay, did not, did not coordinate that, that I was teeing up the next.
Great segue.
I think this is great. I mean, I'm, I got a transportation background, spent 30 years doing this. I, I really appreciate the interest you guys do this. I think, you know, each and every one of us would recognize the importance of transportation across the board and how to react to the growth in Mesa Borough. That's why we're here. You know, and unless the borough does something about it, nobody else will. You know, the days of the state coming to rescue us and provide 100% funds for us to go do what we should be doing are behind us. So I think, you know, I just encourage you to stay tuned in, ask good questions. So my, my segue in between tip 21, 23 is just it. You know, we recognize lessons learned from the past. We recognize some of the issues Mr. Two's has said. I can't answer all those questions of how we came to having the cost estimates that we have. As Mr. Young said earlier, regardless of how good that estimate was five years ago, when we were preparing these for the 2021 package, there's been such cost escalations, they would have been blown out of the ballpark anyhow. Now, that doesn't answer all the reasons why some of these are bad. There are projects, and I'll speak to this a little bit, and, and the reason we're trying to put more structure to our tip 23 process, that were created on this dais by the Assembly without any advantage of staff taking a look at this and giving you some background and support to understand what a purpose of the project should be, what they need it for it is, what that cost estimate really can be. I, I do recognize prior to my time here that there were projects on the, that were being considered for the tip 21 project that had greater budgets assigned to them, that this Assembly decided that budget wasn't what we wanted. So you reduced the budget, but you didn't reduce the scope, you know, so that, those two don't tie together. And, you know, and I recognize that, you know, we own that. We will, you know, going forward, we want to put more boundaries on this. We want to give you the information that allows you to pick the projects with confidence from the list. And that might be a list of 30 that you vet down to 10. It might be all 30. It might be all 30, depending on how much you want to fund. But we would appreciate the opportunity to put more structure to it, to actually define what those costs are and not let some of those decisions be made at whim. Because these are the pitfalls of doing that. They have consequences. So with that being said, you know, I think the, the borough, this assembly, the administration should take great pride in the fact that you have a $68 million tip 21 package that did not require to go into debt. We are currently have a fully funded $68 million program. Now, the 100 million dollar mark is shocking, but keep in mind, there's some projects on there, and I would say Engstrom project in particular kind of inflates that number a bit. Because the, the project that was currently, that was envisioned on the, on the proposition is completely different than what I think would best serve that area. Now, Fisher Triangle is under a separate study where the planning department, they got a, a different project going on right now that looks at four different areas and look at the transportation infrastructure. And I don't know that much, many of you caught what Cole said with respect to what was proposed by an assembly member at the time for a link between Engstrom and Trunk Road and just defined it as, let's go put it here, you know, on the southern route as it's become known as. Well, once we recognize that the proximity of that link to Trunk Road, or excuse me, to the roundabout being proposed at Bogart Engstrom, you, you can go spend a lot of money on that little link and you're not going to get the utility out of it that you absolutely think you are, because people wants that roundabout's in and fully functioning. By another quarter mile, they're gonna hit a roundabout and not have to do a bunch of left turns to get across Habermeyer's Farm and another turn that they have to do a Trunk Road. And so in concert with that Sub area study that I was talking about for the Fisher Triangle, we expanded our vision of what should be done in that area. And so the Engstrom link, and, and again, it's a different project. It probably is unfair to show that we're underfunded on our tip 21 project by so much because that project is completely different than what was envisioned. But, you know, that being said, you know, all these projects that we're in the midst of, I think, I hope you recognize, assembly members, we're coming to you with these decisional documents. We're trying to keep you informed of what's going on with these projects and how we're making decisions and what we're doing to recognize the deficiencies in funding and, and how we intend to move forward. And if we're making bad decisions, give us some feedback. You know, so far, we've just been letting you know we're moving forward. Until somebody says stop, we're gonna continue to make progress. And we're gonna continue to do that. We're, we're putting our decisions on paper, we're submitting them to the manager for confirmation and to the assembly for effective approval. So we're not out of the woods yet, right? Congratulations, Assembly. We got a fully funded $68 million package. We're doing what we can to move every one of those projects forward to the degree that we can. But we, we have an opportunity. We have a tip 23. The assembly did approve Public Works to move forward and prepare this package. We've got a lot of progress and Brad will speak to that. There's a lot of foundational documents that really play into the projects that we, that you'll hear about going forward on tip 23. We got the, of course, the comp plan, you got the LRTP, the Long Range Transportation Plan, which by the way, the borough's done a great job moving forward many of those projects. We're finding that the 2035 plan, we're pretty much running out of projects here pretty quickly that were provided in that long range transportation plan. So planning might have to look at a, another exercise to put together a new LRTP here pretty quick to look, you know, another 20 years in advance. Of course, we got the OS and HP, and then we got the bike and ped plan that's in draft mode right now. So, you know, those are all documents that we look to, to gather some of these projects. And Brad will speak to the process we've gone to so far as well. So there we go. Here we have a half hour presentation. We're probably an hour and a half into it. I probably let Brad go for tip 23 and then we'll let the rest of the questions go where they might.
Oh, yes. Assemblyperson two, go ahead.
So far, what I'd like to say is thank you. And I'm thanking you because I'm glad that you realized the, the failure and how to not do that in the future. And that is developing a program, unveiling things to do, whatever you are. I, I could say in my past that there's no way that I would pick up a bid that I did five years ago and then present it to the owner and say, I'm gonna do it for that. And so giving us 17, 18, 19 numbers and then allowing us to come up with a budget for those, that, that's, I, I, I don't think that's right. But as you say, I say thank you because you acknowledged it and, and that won't happen from here going forward.
Questions, comments?
Through the mayor, if I have one more question, just the, the area and area wide thing, and this is where I'm gonna pivot a little bit to Nick, because he's gonna add some, hopefully some, some background to this. And I told him I wouldn't let him off the hook. And it, it kind of speaks to the manager's comments earlier about the restriction of the way, you know, our, our second class borough, second class borough is and the area wide powers. And effectively, when we promote these projects, and it, and it ties into where we're going on tip 23, is we can't segregate the projects as we're seeing on this spreadsheet that Cole did a great job putting together. You know, where the state really does program a design mode, a utility, you know, right of way acquisition mode, you know, preliminary engineering. My understanding is we cannot do that. We, when we bring projects forward right now for a proposition that anticipates going to get bond funds, we have to have a capital asset on the back end of that, which means we have, I'll have to have an entire project, you know, many times in the absence of the preliminary engineering, that would be beneficial to understand and tighten up our construction estimates. So I don't know if there's any further conversation that's really warranted that. I know Nick has provided me guidance on, you know, that does help assist in which projects we can actually include on our recommended, recommended lists and which can actually go forward to the voters for approval. If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and let Brad do tip 23, then let Nick off the hook.
Just one comment. When this package came before us, I think staff was pretty upfront with us about the estimates that, you know, some of this stuff, we were, we didn't know what it was gonna turn out to be, but we were trying to put a package together and there was a lot in that package, a lot of identified stuff. And so we knew the costs were gonna be higher and unless, we asked a lot of staff, so if, I just know there's limited resources to, you know, send, if we had 20 people to send out in the field and spend days doing the estimates, we'd get it. But I, I do feel like as assembly member, when this package came before us, that the, some of the flaws of it were acknowledged and, and we knew that. And, and then we've been hit, as Mr. Young has, has noted with, you know, out of this world inflation, so just wanted to make a comment.
Assemblyperson one now, right? Go ahead.
Tom, obviously these projects are very expensive and it was almost common sense, all of them require gravel products. So I, my question is if it was more accessible and easier to get to and closer to, is these projects become more affordable when people are, those contractors are bidding for us?
Through the mayor. So Mr. Fahnoff, no, actually, I'm gonna use Clint's magical pixie dust and have all this gravel available to us on site. I'm just kidding. You know, obviously gravel is a big cost element of any transportation project, road or otherwise, right? And proximity certainly plays into a part of that. But we're also recognizing that as well in some of these projects. For instance, Lake's Boulevard, we're taking, potentially taking advantage of some material that was made available to us through a prior road project. So it's effectively a borrow source within an existing right of way. And so we're gonna make that available to our, our borough project for Lake's Boulevard. You know, give the, give the contractor an opportunity to, to use the material.
Okay, so what you're saying is it is a big cost of any construction when it comes to road and it would, I mean, keeping it closer is, and more affordable is always a key to save more money. And then, correct?
Acknowledged, correct.
Thank you.
Deputy mayor?
Um, when you guys go through the list for tip 23, and I don't know if you're gonna go through it individually or not, sir, but could you maybe, is, is there any of these that lap or that are on tip 21 that we may be put over here just because we were worried we wouldn't get tip 21 funded?
You want to start? So we're not doing an expansive, you know, Cole did a great job for tip 21 and I, I think you can see in that and his preparation, the information provided. And obviously the handout provides a lot of detail that he didn't have in his presentation. So, you know, but, you know, if you have a chance to take a look at it, there's additional questions, certainly we'll be able to reach out. There's Brad's presentation right there. I mean, it's one slide, but it does, he'll, he'll fill it in the blanks, but you'll certainly can answer some of those questions.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, yes. Uh huh. Go ahead, assemblyperson two.
Through the mayor. So is it possible that we incorporate our gravel sources, meaning our gravel sources, borough sources of gravel for, like if a person does a project, bids a project that they already pre-know, we put it in the project documents that there's a gravel source there, a borough gravel source to get gravel? I don't, we've never done that in the past, but can we do that now and, 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 and the future?
Through the mayor. Some member twos, yeah, absolutely. I, I would say, and, you know, for instance, in the, in the case of West Lakes Boulevard and, and the concept of using material that's nearby off of Ryan's Creek Road, you know, we have the advantage that we had geotechnical information. We know the quality of the product. You know, we, we know the volume because we did an aerial scan and a topo survey through an aerial scan. And so we, we have the information available to us that gives us very, a very good opportunity to educate the contractor that this, this material, if he so chooses to use, this is the type of material it is and this is the volume that's available to them. You know, we don't, we're not in the mode necessarily dictate they must use because we want to give them that option. But yes, and I would say across all transportation projects or any type of borough projects, if we have resources that we can make available and we have that information that we can describe quality, volume, and take that wildcard out of a contractor's bid numbers, then, yeah, we, we would certainly should consider doing so.
Go ahead, sir.
Are we, do we have the capability now to tell contractors that they can go to the Matsu Borough landfill and grab that gravel for doing borough projects? Or any project, in fact? Or is that a whole nother topic?
Through the mayor. No, I mean, it, it is a reasonable question. And as you're well aware, we have an active and ongoing project out at the landfill to excavate a cell for future use, which also means we have a contractor that has oversight and control of the area. And so we would have to kind of navigate those two items in order to determine if we could, you know, impede upon his, you know, his project to, to take use of material that the borough otherwise owns. So it's not as, in other words, if, if we did not have an active construction area in the cell right now, I would say absolutely. And it's not that we can't, but I think it just adds another layer of, another element that we'd have to consider as we move forward, if we chose to move forward. And, and right now, you know, maybe like the 49th Street pathway might be an opportunity to do something like that.
Go ahead, sir.
So I, I'm probably thinking in the back of my mind, we're building a new road to the landfill. That's a perfect place to get gravel. So I think every contractor would like to know that there's a gravel source and then we might even have a dump source at the landfill for any of the overburden. And so do we put that, maybe we should put that in bid documents that we have those things available to them? Is that possible?
Well, it is complicated in the fact that it's landfill. It's not a gravel extraction site. It's not a gravel source. I thought you were referring to the fact that we're actually excavating cell five. So if you're talking about other areas of landfill that we could make available, you know, that, that would have to be something that would be separately considered.
Okay, I might've got off track and, because I didn't care about cell five, two and three. I just cared about gravel.
May I, mayor?
Mike, go ahead.
So to Mr. Two, I'll ask land management to get a map together of what borough sources are out there and we can just make that available. And then if a contractor as part of their bid wants to consider use of that, they can contact land management and, and sort that out. Because really, all of those resources will be under our land management division. So it would, it should not be hard at all with our GIS just to throw that on a map and make it available as part of the plan set.
Thank you.
Deputy mayor?
Thank you. That's exactly what I was gonna ask for is if we could get land management to make a map. Yep, thank you. And then in that situation, if it was gravel off a borough source, would we, do we charge for that gravel? I mean, it's right hand, left hand, or do we just make it available to the project? I guess, Nick, good question for Nick, because I see.
Mr. Attorney?
He doesn't like the answer. At the end of the day, the assembly can do what it wants. Now, you just have to recognize that there may be contractual risks in designating owner supplied material without knowing exactly what's there. We ran into it one time down at the port. We said, hey, owner supplied material, just get it out of that pit there. Contractor went out and the material wasn't what we said it was.
You mean the spec of the gravel?
Yes, absolutely. So the answer in, as it stands right now is they would just bid, they would just pay for it. But as the manager said, land management could certainly publish a site and a rate.
Yep.
That's why I said it's, right. So as it stands right now, it's, it's, yes, they would, the contractors would pay for it. The bond proceeds would basically flow from us to the contractor, from the contractor back to us via the land management department. So to change that, then you're getting into a situation where you say it's owner supplied material. That has, it's not that it can't be done. It has its own risks and we'd have to work through that to get there.
We could sort that out later. I think once we see the map, there's geology reports, we, there's things that we can make pretty educated guesses, but really just making that map available. We have projects from tip 21 and the potential tip 23 that are all throughout the whole core area of the borough. And so making a map like that available, I think would speak to what Mr. Two's trying to do, which is just let the contractors know that it'll bring the cost down if we can supply the gravel. But anyways, great question by Moki, great idea by Mike. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Assemblyperson two, go ahead.
Okay, so I didn't mean to imply that you put it in the contract and say you will get it out of here. It is totally up to the contractor that he goes and says, I like your material, I'm gonna use it. And then, of course, we sell it to them. For instance, the project that you're gonna build a new road to the landfill, a guy could go in there with really big earth moving equipment and build you a road very quickly out of that landfill. Therefore, our project dollars could be really low, but the people bidding, if they don't know that they can access that, for instance, you would use haul trucks, big art off-road trucks. You wouldn't use a 10 yard dump truck because of the, the, how close it is. So if our contractors know this before they bid, we will, we will gain as a community because we won't have to pay as much to get the good job. So I'm just saying, put it in the contract that, hey, we have a pit over here.
Any other comments? I think maybe we're ready to go on.
I'm sorry? Yeah, we're trying.
Good evening. I'm here to.
Brad, if you would, Brad, if you'd state your name for the record, so in case somebody's listening, thank you.
My name is Brad Schwartz. I'm the Pre-Design and Engineering Division Manager for the Public Works Department. I'm gonna walk you through the, what's up on the screen there. I think you also have a copy in your packet. The process that we are, have been taking since the assembly asked us to move forward with this project, the tip 23 project in last fall, one of the first things we did was we made a call for nominations for projects. We sent out a request to, well, first of all, we started with, we looked at the long range transportation plan and we identified projects that had not been completed in that plan. That was, that was the initial list. And then we also sent out a, a request to all the borough departments, to the RSA boards, to the Transportation Advisory Board, to the Planning Commission, to the Assembly, and also to the cities, and asked if there were projects that they wanted to add to the list. Those nominations culminated in 30 some plus projects on the list. And since then, since you've received your packet, we've also heard back from the cities and they have some nominations they would like to add to the list too, so we'll, we'll update the list. Following that, in January, we went ahead and created a criteria committee to apply criteria to the project list. We created a screening process that was used to determine the projects met certain criteria. Things like if we're gonna be bonding for any of these projects, they need to be collector roads or higher as far as functional classification. Other things that were considered was, does the project make the transportation system safer? Does it support economic development? Does it have public support in the past from other boards? Does it have public support in the past from other boards or community councils? Does the, how, how ready is the project as far as have we already done design? Have we already done any right of way acquisition? All those things helped to get, you know, filter out projects that didn't have anything done. And in the, one of the last criteria that we looked at was, does it improve connectivity in our transportation network? Following the screening process, then we created a scoring committee that was made up of the public works director, several school district representatives, community development, land management division rep. We had several engineers that, that were on the committee. We had a planning director and the deputy director for emergency services were all on the scoring committee. The scoring matrix that we used was developed from looking at other local governments in Alaska and other MPOs, metropolitan planning organizations, such as we're going to, we're developing our own. And we looked at those that particularly had transportation networks similar to ours. If you look at, at the tip 23 spreadsheet that's in your packet, there's, the road projects were scored, but there's also groups of projects that were not scored. If you look at that far right column, there's subtypes that are listed. Examples would be bike and pedestrian pathways, bridges, parks and rec access, school access and transit. Those were not scored because they did not fit very well into the criteria that we were using for the roads. Then in, the next step was in February, we took the list, project list, to the transportation advisory board and provided them a briefing. They still have two positions that weren't filled at the time, so we, we committed to coming back to them when those positions are filled so that we could get the full board's review and recommendations. Well, we're also planning, we, we are currently developing cost estimates for the list that you've got and we hope to be done with that by the end of March. Once that's completed, then it moves on to the planning commission for review and resolution of support. And we're also going to be briefing the local road service advisory board, the large board, in April. Once it, once it moves past the planning commission, then it goes to directly to the assembly. And we look to the assembly to, to make a decision as to how much funding you want to put towards the projects and as well as whether you, whether or not you want to move the project list to the, to the voters. And then the last step would be the placing, the placing the projects on the ballot in November of 2023.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Brad.
We're almost there, I promise, mayor. I'm going to come in and clean up, do a little bit of triage here, I guess. I am, when I do presentations, I like to come in, tell you what I'm going to tell you. Let the guys tell you and I'm going to kind of repeat what they just said, make sure they heard it. So I'm here to repeat what everybody, what they just said, right? So a lot of what I, I came in planning to say, I already had to say it in my transition period, but like again, I go back to, I appreciate kind of the interest in this. I think we all find it is going to be very important as we go forward. So just in closing, we, you know, tip 21, we have an active project. We got a lot of work due out in front of us, whether it be the 2023 construction season or a program, projects to, to complete the list over the next couple of years. We got a, we got a challenge of the funding shortfalls that we got to have further conversation on, how to best accomplish that. You know, and I think I heard some suggestion early tonight, maybe that we don't need to kind of spread out our dollars over all those projects. Maybe we do go forward and just complete the projects and, and maybe find ways to find other dollars to complete the backend. I don't know if that's a directive, you know, it was a statement and we got to figure out whether or not, if that's a plan of action. Tip 21, again, I'll say, you know, we are not making decisions in vacuum. We're making recommendations. We're going to push them forward. We're, we're doing our best to keep the, the body informed of projects as they move forward and the challenges of accomplishing the, the projects as they are originally intended and anticipated by the voters or by this, this body. And so if there's ever any questions as to the decisions we're making, you know, we're right across the street. I invite you to come over, call my office and, and, and ask questions about why we landed on the decisions that we did. Going forward, tip 23, you know, fully recognizing the errors of the past, you know, I, I hope that you feel that, you know, me, my, my staff, the manager, you know, we want to put a little bit more process into what has formerly just kind of showed up at this and becoming a list. And you know, not all projects have had the research or the consideration that they should have had before they were put in front of the voters. And, and you know, again, there's consequences for that. And we're living with some of those through the tip 21 and I'm trying to control those as we go through the tip 23. And the way we're going to do that is, you know, we, we have been very forward in requesting our call for nominations from a variety of sources, whether it be the cities, the boards and commissions, the assembly. And so that we can do our part to then do the research, do the legwork, to give you the information that you will ultimately need come June to decide which projects go forward, what the volume of that, that funding level should look like. But hopefully with structure so that you can feel confident that you're selecting projects that we have vetted for you and not create projects up here that don't have the benefit of staff's time to investigate and then put forward a cost value that hasn't been discussed, hasn't been considered, and then ends up being part of this conversation three years from now. And then I guess with that being said, you know, we, right now, we're, we're receiving a lot of projects. We have filtered and screened out some that didn't meet the merits of being pushed forward to the, the ballot in November. There's still, you know, several dozen projects that are on that list that are being filtered that we will be spending staff's time. We prioritize some of them. We're anticipating, receive a few more projects that will go through that process. But ultimately, we'd like to get those down and then we need to kind of understand what that level of funding looks like. You know, the LRTP speaks to a program based on federal funding and state funding and anticipates, you know, what was otherwise called a road bonds. I think we've gotten related for the bonds concept. That's why we're calling it transportation infrastructure program now because not every, not every list of projects needs to pursue bonding. And so there's, take away that illusion, it doesn't mean you can't. But we, the, the LRTP speaks to roughly a program of about $40 million every couple of years. You know, what's the validation in that? Does the assembly validate that? Do we want to do more? Do we want to do less? You know, at some point, how much effort do I want my staff, you know, putting forward in all these projects? That could be about a $60 million package if we're only going to try doing $20 million. We can lop off, you know, the bottom third right away, or excuse me, bottom two thirds. And, you know, spend the effort where the effort's due. So that feedback would be useful and purposeful, you know, in a, in a near time basis and not wait till June because then, you know, you guys got a short amount of time to get it on the, on the ballot. So I guess I'll throw that out there, you know, that, those are concepts. We're looking for feedback from the assembly at some point. I would encourage you to look at the projects as they are currently listed. I would encourage you to take a peek at how we've come to include and prioritize. And encourage you to tell us if there's information lacking from what we're presenting to you that you will need to make informed decisions and give it to us in a timely manner so that we can give it back to you in a manner that, you know, gives you the confidence that you're making correct decisions, not only for the borough, but for your constituents. So without mayor.
Comments?
Yep. Having you up there is a breath of fresh air. Don't sugarcoat anything. I appreciate the honesty. We, I, my personal opinion and we, we've got budget season coming up. For those of you who may not know, more than likely, we will adopt our budget prior to the states. So I mean, that's fair to say. So we've, we've got legislative priorities in there that we may or may not be granted that could help with road projects. But again, I'll just say more than likely, pending some sort of crazy reconsideration by somebody here, we adopt our budget before the states. And I don't think that would be a good idea. But anyway, so, um, yeah, keep grinding on tip 23. These are all great projects. Obviously we'll prioritize them. I don't know what that number is. I do think we owe it to our voters to button up and finish 21, which I think we can do during budget season here for the most part, before we start really hammering down on 23. And, and so my question for the clerk or the manager, either one, would be, when do we have to have that flushed out by? In order to, if we wanted to go to the ballot this year, when, when one's our drop dead date to have that ready? So everybody can have it on their mind.
I did. I don't have an exact date, it is in August, so you really should be introducing something by late June.
Okay, and then the good news is August is after the state and us conclude our budget. And that's what I wanted to make sure of. So thank you, because it will help us make an informed decision. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Okay, I guess it's it.
Thank you for your time. Apologize if it took a lot longer than I expected, but I, I, again, I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the body want to take a break before we go on to the next segment? Yes, I see some yeses. We are late, late, late. So if I can have everybody come back to their seats, please. Looks like we have staff ready to go. So go ahead, lady.
Do you want me to just get started?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. I'm Kim Solian. I'm the Planning Services Manager here at the Borough. I'm very excited to talk with you tonight about all the changes that are happening now that we finally got our urbanized area designation. You all should thank the manager from saving you from death by my PowerPoint this evening that I gleefully presented to him, and it was 54 slides long. And he very quietly and thoughtfully came down to my office and said, we're going to need to cut that down. I'm like, oh, no, there's so much good information. Like, I really need to get into the weeds. And he's like, no, no, not tonight. So hopefully, I'm going to stay high level, but I'm going to point towards where we're going over the next six months to hopefully come back to each body, the Planning Commission and the Assembly, and have a more in-depth conversation about some of the decisions that we need to make to 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 change how we're doing certain things related to this urbanized area that we now have in the middle of the borough. So as you all know, or maybe some of you haven't heard yet, but in December, December 29, the census finally released. A year late, their urbanized area designations, and they identified the Borough core area as having an urbanized area, and they titled it Wasilla, Kinnick, Fairview, and North Lakes Urban Area. And that made us all scratch our heads a little bit because it didn't come out with a map. And we're like, wait a minute, what about Palmer? We really thought Palmer would have been included. So they finally produced the map about a week later, and I'll show you that. And then another slide that it does also include Palmer. So when this designation happens, I'm going to talk about the MPO first, then I'm going to talk about MS4 and stormwater management. Then I'm going to talk about some changes related to public transit and how providers get funding now that we have this urbanized area. But for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, once an urbanized area is designated, the federal government has some guidelines that you have one year to form a Metropolitan Planning Organization, once that designation happens. And so here's the urbanized area map that we got from the census. The shaded area is that the what the census gave us for the urbanized area.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I've seen this map a few times now. I see Vine, but past Vine, I don't see if it's Settlers Bay, where it is. If we could in the future provide a little bit better detailed map with the side roads.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about the boundary development process for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And with that, there'll be very detailed maps where you can go all around the boundary of the urbanized area, see all the roads, and then look at the proposed boundary. But you're right, this one's hard to see. And we didn't name all the roads because it gets a little confusing when it's presented in such a small way. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization, all of you have heard me probably talk about this before, it's it's a planning organization that looks at, it's a policymaking organization and a planning organization that needs to be formed to look at where do all the roads, public transit infrastructure, bike and pedestrian infrastructure needs to go in this urbanized area. So the most densely populated and fastly growing area of the the region, the federal government is saying that needs to have a higher level of focus of planning in terms of making sure we're putting this infrastructure and spending federal dollars in the right place. So basically, the MPO, once formed, it'll be an independent organization from the Borough Government, that we've been meeting over the past three years with the cities of Palmer and Wasilla, DOT, Kinnick, and Chickaloon Tribes, public transit advocates, and bike and pedestrian advocates, to talk about what this new organization should look like and what its structure should be. And they did decide that they want to form a nonprofit organization. So there'll be representatives from the Borough Assembly and the manager on the policy board, as well as the cities and tribes, and they will be the governing body of this new organization that's looking at all these different planning documents. So one nice thing about the MPO is that it comes with federal funding. So right now, the state receives federal transportation dollars, federal highway dollars, from the feds to the state. And outs, there's two other urbanized areas in the state. Well, now we make the third. So there's one in Fairbanks, and there's one in Anchorage. So there is a funding formula that allocates those federal dollars to the MPOs, to the urbanized areas. And then the rest of the funding gets spread throughout the state, and the DOT decides where those dollars should go, and they have their own formula. So now that we have our own, we will have our own MPO, once we stand it up as an official organization, we will get an allocation of about $400,000 a year to focus on those planning activities and to pay staff to operate this office. And then we'll be able to program, having seen Public Works's presentation about all the transportation projects and how much they really cost, our 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 new $10 million that we'll get to program annually doesn't seem like a lot, but it's more than we're currently getting on an annual basis to support those transportation infrastructure projects. So so like I said, annually, we'll get an allocation of funding to do the planning and to support the organization, and then we'll get to program about $10 million plus match to some of those projects. There will be a match requirement, depending on if we decide we want to, I'll just use the Fish Hook Bike Path, for example. We want to program that into our MPO project. There will be a nine percent match. And depending on who owns the facility, if it's DOT's pathway, or the Borough's going to take ownership of the pathway, we'll need to come up with that portion of match for that project. But I'll bring that calculation to you later on when we get into more detail about the MPO. But I just wanted to let you know that there will be a requirement that whoever's getting a new road or a bike path or a new transit facility will have to help come up with some of those match dollars. So now that the urbanized area designation happened, we're kind of on a timeline to form this Metropolitan Planning Organization. So by December 29 of this year, we have to be up and running. And so a couple of things need to happen. We need to form this operating agreement and finalize it and submit a package to the Governor's Office. And they will actually bless the MPO, bless the planning, and say, you are now MVP for Transportation. You are now the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Matt Suburro. So in April-ish, I'd like to introduce it, maybe come in May, present a resolution of support for the formation of MVP for Transportation with the operating agreement, with the MPO boundary and the bylaws. So I'd like to present that to the Assembly, and I think we'll bring it to the Planning Commission first to recommend approval, so that you can say, as a governing body, that you support the work that we've done so far. And then within that resolution, you will be naming that two members of our organization will serve on the policymaking body of the MPO. So right now, we have it listed that the manager will serve as the Borough representative, and either the mayor or an assembly person. So you all have to pick who you want to have in that seat, but you'll be signing that in the resolution that you are saying that you agree that the Borough will have two seats on the policy board and be part of this organization. Another piece, a big piece of the MPO is finalizing the boundary map. So I showed you the urbanized area boundary. The MPO has to look at a 20-year horizon for where they think development is going to happen over the next 20 years that's outside that urbanized area boundary. And so we have to look at where we think population is going to go. So we picked a population forecast. We think there's about somewhere between 34 and 40,000 people are going to come move into the core area over the next 20 years. And we need to present our planning area boundary. So on April 29, we're going to have a April, March 29, we're going to have a public meeting here. You all are invited to to go through the details of how we came up with the draft boundary, how we what we looked at, the population forecast, the the undeveloped land, the platted land, the current plating actions, and made our recommendations. So we're looking for public comment on that. So once we have the boundary finalized, and we took all the public comment, we'll complete this package, we'll bring it to you for review. I haven't, I didn't give it to you tonight. I thought about it. But, you know, Moki made a joke earlier that we don't want all these papers right now. So I'm going to finalize this document, and then that's what we'll bring forward for you to look at as the operating agreement, which talks about, you know, how the organization's going to operate, who's going to be on the policy board, and the technical committee, and then the bylaws, how the meetings are going to be run, and then that boundary map. So we anticipate it'll take a couple of months for the Governor to review this package in terms of our what we want for MVP and to approve it. And we're thinking that sometime in August or September, we will get that notification that we've been formed. And then we will file our nonprofit corporation paperwork, because we did decide that we want to stand up a nonprofit. Nick, you'll be happy to know, all the other organizations part of the MPO are getting a different resolution, naming their members to be part of the nonprofit corporation, but not Matt Suburro, because we can't form another organization. So I've made that distinction. And all of this, I'm sharing all of this in this timeline because we want to be ready to accept our first round of federal funding for the MPO starting October, October 1, which is the, you know, federal fiscal year turnover. And then we'll hire staff and rent an office, and away we will go. So that it's very exciting. And we, like I said, we've been working for the past three years to put all the pieces in play and help bring everybody along with us. And it feels nice to be very close to the finish line on that. I will just direct you, MVP for Transportation is the name that we chose for our MPO. We do have a website. It's MVPMPO.com. It has recordings of all of our past meetings and past minutes. It has all the foundational documents that we've created to date. It has the advertisement for our boundary development meeting. Hopefully, in a few days, it will have an interactive map so that you can zoom in to the boundary and and look at things in a more realistic format and a place to leave comments. And then what else is on there? Well, there's a fact sheet and one that I also put in your, I think in your red folders. Right, Lonnie? Is a MPO fact sheet. So these are frequently asked questions about what is an MPO, and how is it formed, and how is it governed, and why do we do this? Just wanted to make sure you had access to that information, in case any questions come up before I come back again to give a more detailed presentation about that. All right, I'm ready to move on to stormwater, unless there are any questions about the MPO. Okay, so with the urbanized area designation, we joke that in planning that we win a couple prizes. And one is to form an MPO, and the other is to manage stormwater differently in the core area. So with the MPO or the the urbanized area designation, here's another map view of that, what that boundary looks like. There is a requirement that we get a permit from DEC, because we operate a municipal, separate storm sewer system. So the the areas in our community, the sides of our roads, the runoff from parking lots that collect storm water, and it flows into a ditch or to a pipe, and then eventually makes it to a water body. We have one now, but once it's not regulated, it's not monitored. And so now that we have this urbanized area designation, the EPA, through the Clean Water Act, requires that we monitor stormwater and manage stormwater a little bit differently. And it applies to the cities, the Borough, and the DOT. And basically, yeah.
So is the MS4, it looks like the map is the same as the MPO, or is that, is that right? Or is that smaller?
So the urbanized area boundary will likely be smaller than the boundary that the MPO plans within. So there will be two different boundaries where we're operating, managing stormwater regulations, and then planning for transportation infrastructure. That's so it's different. But I haven't showed you the MPO boundary map in this presentation. I'll be back with that. Yeah. So the main things I wanted to highlight related to managing stormwater differently, and what does that really mean? What's that going to mean for the Borough? Is that the permit requires that we comply with these six minimum control measures. And so, public education and outreach, it it basically states that within the permit, to comply with the permit, to be in compliance, we have to educate the public about water pollution, and making sure that they're not doing things to to contaminate our water bodies, maintaining your septic, picking up dog poop, not using fertilizers on your lawn if you're near a creek. So we'll do some public education. That's pretty reasonable. Public involvement is like stream cleanups and community cleanups. Where it gets a little more in depth is that the the detecting and eliminating illicit discharge, managing construction site runoff, and managing post-construction site runoff will be kind of heavy lifts for us as an organization, because we are not currently, because we don't have a mandatory land use permit where people are coming in and telling us what they're doing on the landscape, we can't really monitor those three without that information. So we're going to have to create three new ordinances that give us more information about what people are doing. So the first thing we'll be doing is creating a big, a map that looks at where is our storm sewer, our MS4 system, that will include the city's system, and looking at where drainage is going, and where runoff might go, and where ditches and detention ponds are, and, you know, where the city's systems are, and just knowing where it is. We're going to have to talk to the community about what illicit discharge is. And basically, what it is, it is, is any runoff and any of our stormwater systems that is flowing not during a storm event. And so if there's runoff from a car wash, flowing off the parking lot into a ditch, like, and not being treated or filtered before it runs off into the ditch, and then even to a water body, we have to talk to that business owner and make sure that they're treating that water and containing that water before it flows. So that will be a bit of a heavy lift for us to figure out and do, because we're not currently doing that. We also will have to require that anyone developing anything within the core area that's an acre or more, if they're going to disturb the whole site, they have to come get a permit, and they have to show us a site plan that shows how they're going to control runoff from that construction site, because silt into the water bodies is is one of the major contaminants that we're trying to prevent. So we have to make sure that they're doing the construction in a way that's going to prevent that runoff. And so they're going to have to come talk to us about that. The other piece is, right now, DEC requires a SWIP permit from projects that are are going to be over an acre. So the big change with the MS4 is they're transferring their responsibility and making sure everybody gets a SWIP to the Borough, and making us responsible. sure everybody gets a SWIP to the borough and making us responsible to make sure that everybody's getting a SWIP, who needs to get a SWIP. So that's another reason why everyone's going to have to come through our door and we're going to have to go through a checklist. And if they didn't get a stormwater pollution prevention permit from DEC, we'll have to send them back to DEC, get their permit back, review it and then give them our permit. So that would just be more paperwork and more process that we're not currently doing right now. Then the last piece related to post-construction, if a developer gets a permit, they do everything right during construction, they got the DEC SWIP permit, we're going to go check and make sure that construction's going well and everything's being followed. But once the project is over, they will also have to submit, well, before they start, what the plan is for how to deal with stormwater once the Walmart parking lot is built or the, you know, apartment complex, you know, housing unit is built. And then if we go to the site and stormwater is running off the property in a way that we didn't plan for, we'll have to work with that developer to fix that. So there's going to be a lot more checks and balances related to development that's happening. And the main point is we have a lot more people living in the core area. We have a lot more pavement and parking lots and roofs and the chances for water contamination and having problems with our water quality go up because of that, because we don't have all those natural filtration sources. So fortunately, the program to, to, to get to start year one, it's a five-year permit. Because it's our first time, we have time to ramp up and we don't have to comply day one with all of these activities. And they're going to, DEC is going to be, work with us to make sure we can, yeah, build the program in a reasonable way. The last thing, good housekeeping. That just means that the borough itself will need to be making sure that our parking lots, our construction projects are all using the best management practices related to runoff. And we might have to change some of the things that we're currently doing right now. So in terms of the timeline for this permit, it's like the MPO, it has a timeline. Once you get the urbanized area designation, the clock kind of starts. So what we're waiting for is a letter from DEC letting us know that we need to apply, excuse me, for an MS4 permit. And so we expect that letter to come in May or June. The EPA is working on some new definitions related to how they're interpreting the urbanized area boundary because it's a little bit different than it has been in years past. So we anticipate that letter in May or June. Then they're going to give us about six months from getting that letter to draft a stormwater management program plan that outlines in narrative format how we're going to meet all these minimum control measures and on what timeline. And then we're going to submit that to DEC. They're going to review it, they're going to produce a draft permit for us that then is more of a chart format of all the things that we're going to do and on what timeline based on what we put in our plan document. Whoops. And then there's going to be a 60-day review period with the comment on that because we're going to be talking to the public about what we're going to be doing differently. So anyway, from the time when they get, issue us the letter to when we expect to have a final permit issued, it's about a year and there's a lot of back and forth in that process. So gearing up for the anticipation of that letter, we have had a contractor onboard for the past year. We just went through a six-month educational series with the cities and DOT and any interested party to talk about what is this new permit? What is it going to mean? We went through in detail all the minimum control measures. Now we're moving towards like getting, you know, real serious about how we as an organization, how we think our organization is going to, to meet these requirements. And we're going to put together a stormwater, a draft kind of stormwater management plan. We're going to look at putting together a five-year work plan so that we have clarity about when we're going to need to be doing pieces, different pieces and parts. Then we're going to put together a draft budget for what is it going to cost the borough to operate this program? Because we're probably going to need new staff, we're going to have to need, we're going to need new processes, we're going to have to have this map created. It's, it's going to be, well, it's just going to cost money and so we're going to figure out, you know, what that's going to be. So I'd like to come back in May and present some of those draft documents and draft timelines and draft budgets for your review. I also, and we're meeting with the cities because there is an opportunity for the borough to do a joint permit, probably with DOT, or to be co-permittees with DOT and the two cities. And so we can either go all together and, and figure out, are there cost shares and work shares and who's responsible to do what? Or do we want to stay separate? So we're meeting with the cities to kind of give them an overview of the full program, answer any questions and try to get some information. Do they want to work with us or do they want to do it on their own? And hopefully I'll be able to bring that information back to you in May with this overview of the project. And that's kind of that piece. And then we'll go from there based on what folks want to do.
I'm pretty reluctant to partner with the cities on it mainly because I have zero faith in the Wasilla City Planning Department to get anything correct. So it, it, I don't think anybody that works in that city has confidence in them. So, so anyways, I'd be pretty reluctant. I don't want to see us get in trouble if one of the city's planning departments fail.
So you mentioned $400,000 for the organization. Is that like a yearly, what it's going to cost? And then in that, is that you're going to have to have code compliance officers and stuff? Are those, are you going to rely on the borough? If you've got your own nonprofit, does that mean that you stand alone and $400,000 pays for all your, all your things? Or are you going to take $400,000 from the 10 million and to get another $2 million worth of borough stuff? Now we got a $3 million project that we grossed 10. We gave you a three, it gives us a seven, gives us that. So where's the math?
Yeah. Through the mayor. That's a great question. So there are really two projects and, or two, two programs connected because we got the urbanized area designation, but very separate in their funding and their organization and their process. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization is federally funded and supported. The MS4 permit requirements are unfunded. So we, the Mattsu Borough and the cities and the DOT will need to come up with the math, come up with the funding to comply with the permit and operate these programs.
Just kind of, how many people is that?
So we're anticipating at least two full-time staff to operate the stormwater management program with all the report, reporting requirements on an annual basis, all the training, all the public outreach, all the permit reviews, site inspections. We're thinking at least two full-time staff. And then we don't really know yet how, what that looks like in terms of road maintenance and our contractors cleaning out culverts and dishes and spreading stand and, and plowing snow. There's a whole other maintenance side to our system that's not really calculated. And then we also don't know, will we be sharing staff with public works where they'll, will the engineers in public works be reviewing the, the permits? Or will it be the, the permit center that, and planning that's reviewing permits? So there's a lot of details that we have not figured out yet, but hopefully over the next couple of months, we'll put some ideas together for you to review and help us think through what makes sense.
One of our legislative priorities is asking for money to help set this up. And it's, it's pretty typical for the state to participate in that. They helped Fairbanks, they helped Anchorage. I do believe they'll help us.
Assemblyperson hours?
Just had a question on that SWIP. So we would also be required to review it. Can that review be as simple as you got your DEC SWIP permit?
Yeah.
Check, okay, good.
But we have to make sure they got that permit because if they didn't get it, then we are responsible.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure we weren't doubling up.
Yes. Assemblyperson two.
But on that SWIP, and then you're saying that it would be the borough's responsibility to actually make sure that whoever got the SWIP is actually following through with the SWIP, that they're putting out all those, whatever they said on the document. That's your job now, not DEC's, right?
So you've exceeded my range of knowledge with managing the SWIP permit related to MS4, but I will come, I'll note that question and come back with an answer. What I can say is that we will be required as borough staff to go do the checkups on each construction site through construction and then post-construction, which I think is very similar, similar to the requirements in this, in the SWIP. So we're going to have to go visit.
Yes, debony mayor.
Every SWIP I've ever gotten, I hired a third-party contractor to do the monthly reporting. It's pretty typical. I, I would highly advise any contractor that gets a SWIP to not do it themselves unless you're a much more talented person than me. So I think it'd be pretty easy to keep up on that, Moki. More than likely, they've got somebody typically third-party that does their monthly reporting for them.
Yes.
Yeah. So what I was getting at though, Rob, is that she's talking about two people. And if you had two people in the office taking care of all that enormous amount of paperwork that's going on, you have to have people out there actually checking the projects to make sure that the people are actually obeying by those. And, and, you know, that's, that's what I was asking. So like two people, to me, don't sound, man, she sounded like she had like 10 people going on there because of this amount of work that she has to do. And then you have to go out and check on these sites, you know? So I'm just wondering the magnitude of this organization that's going to be built, you know?
Yeah, that's a great points. I think in all fairness, ideally it would be set up in a way that the contractors emailed their reporting to the staff. We, you know, if it's coming from a third-party person or even from them that says it is what it is, then, then we need to figure that it is, right? So I, I don't know. I hope this doesn't grow into the borough trying to have a lot of employees driving around checking on everything either because I don't know that we have anybody here capable of it, right? And so the MPO as a whole, I'm pretty excited about. It gives us a voice at the table, gives the borough a voice. It's, it's always formerly been just a DOT voice and now we'll have, we'll have some representation at the table too. So I think that'll be good. DOT has done an amazing job in the past, but again, this gives us a voice. I'm pretty reluctant on the whole MS4 thing, but I'll save my comments for another day on that.
Yeah, there's oysterings, right? State, right? Say, okay, you can have this money, but da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And the da-da-da-da-da takes all the money, in my personal opinion. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'd be afraid to get in the $10 million and it only costs $32 million a year of implement.
That's some of that new math that we didn't learn when we went to school, right? Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah. And I'm looking at the title of this, Wasilla Connect Fairview North Lakes Urban Area. When you have an urban area designated as such, do you have certain activities that cannot occur in, within that area? Is that, are we moving closer to zoning? Which I'm okay with, but.
So that's a little bit of a different conversation. So the, the feds aren't requiring us to, 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 saying we can't do anything, we just have to do some different level of planning and management. We as an organization can have a conversation about the urbanized area, the greater core area, the MPO planning area, the MS4 area and talk about, are we guiding land use in a way that's really serving the public and can we manage all the services that we're trying to provide in that area? So it's a conversation that we had at the strategic planning session about, do we need to look at the core area a little bit differently?
Yeah.
We do have an update on the comp plan that's happening and Kelsey Anderson, one of my coworkers back there, will be bringing information forward to have some of those conversations in the future. So I just want, I have a couple more slides to wrap up. I just wanted to talk about public transit. And so just want to highlight the beautiful new buses that Valley Transit just got and they just finished their wraps. Like they are very cool. They got five new buses, I think. But one of the things related to the urbanized area designation is that how funding flows to our public transit providers now is going to change. So right now, like I talked about earlier, you know, when the borough just had the rural area, DOT got an allocation of federal funds and they decided statewide where, where the priorities were. Similarly with public transit, because the borough and the cities don't participate in public transit, our transit system is operated by nonprofit organizations. And so they were individually going to the state to their community transit program and requesting operations and capital funds. Now that we are designated urbanized, the, some public entity in the borough in the core area is going to be eligible to receive formula funding. So we're going to get an annual allocation of formula funding to operate a public transit system. So the state reached out to us last year about this time and said, are you aware of what's going to happen to public transit funding with this urbanized area change? And we weren't because we're not intimately involved in public transit services. So they basically said, we would like to talk with the borough about becoming a direct recipient, which means that those federal formula dollars will flow to the borough. And then we can form a grant program and then grant funds to the operators to continue to operate public transit. Nonprofit organizations are not eligible to be a direct recipient of those federal funds. And so it needs to be a public entity that's stewarding the funds, managing the reports and the requirements and the data and the tracking and then, you know, distributing those funds to a sub-recipient. So right now in the core area, Valley Transit is the main operator that provides public transit services. And like I said before, they're getting rural funding. So on October 1st, they will no longer be eligible, eligible for that, that rural funding and will need an organization to stand up and either the borough or the cities or to stand up and be that direct recipient to create that pass-through funding. And I just wanted to highlight that right now, their match requirements, they get 90% funding from the feds and they get a, they do a 10% match. With this new formula funding that will come through to the urbanized area, it's a 50/50 match for operations. So not only would the borough or the, or the cities need to become the direct recipient, we need to have a different conversation about how is, how are we going to help our operators, our transit operators with that match? Because it's a much heavier lift. And right now, Mattsu Health Foundation is paying a good portion of the match for Valley Transit. So a lot of questions right now around transit. So I went to DOT and I cried on their shoulder and I said, you have to help us figure this out. Like this is too big. This is a big change. Like this is a whole new department or division that the borough might, if we're going to become the direct recipient of the funds, we, we need support to figure out what that looks like because we're not involved in public transit right now. So they issued a, a contract, they put some funding aside and issued a contract to R&amp;M Engineering, it's a consulting firm in Anchorage. Ben Coleman, I don't know if any of you remember him, he used to work here in the planning department. He's an excellent transportation planner with a specialty in public transit. So they have assigned him to our project to help us figure out, how could we, if the borough wanted to become a direct recipient, how, what policies and procedures do we need to put in place? What do we need to plan for? How could we manage those funds? What does purchasing requirements look like? To put a whole package together and then come back to you as a body and ask, do you want to move forward with this? Or these are the options on the table? So I'm hopeful that I could have that draft planned for continuity so public transit in the core area doesn't fail starting October 1st. Come back to you in August with a proposal for consideration so that we could potentially stand up a new program and be ready to accept those funds starting October 1st.
So if we were the recipient of the funds, would we, in allocating those funds out, have to put it out for competitive bid?
That, yes. Okay. We would have to create a competitive grant program with guidelines about the types of service that we, the feds are going to give us some guidelines around how the funds can be used and then we'll have to develop our grant program to request that an operator meet those criteria. Yes.
Can you tell us how Mattsu Health Foundation's tangled up in this? Explain the, the funding.
Oh, so because the Mattsu Borough nor the cities support, have public transportation programs themselves, we don't, as a local government, most local governments in Alaska and across the country support public transit in some way because, you know, it's our, you know, our most, what do I want to say? Anyway, it's a good service and. know, our most... What do I want to say? Anyway, it's a good service, and it is a service that often needs public support to operate on its... to operate. And so because we're not providing support, the Matsu Health Foundation recognized that there are a lot of seniors, there are a lot of disabled people, lower-income people, people who just don't drive, youth who need transportation. And without someone supporting the match, we might not have that public transportation service available. So they have stepped in to support the match. That's all I can say.
Assemblyperson, I don't know.
Is the $10 million that's divided between these three categories, or it's $10 million per each, or what... How does that spread? Or your kind of office would be determining that number?
So the $10 million is as an estimate of what we think the MPO will be allowed to program on an annual basis for transportation infrastructure. The policy, so we'll create a 20-year plan, looking at where we think population is going to grow and where we need this infrastructure. Then, like, you know, Tom talked about TIP 23 and TIP 21 is kind of like a five-year funding program of where we're gonna spend those dollars. So the MPO will create a similar process, a Metropolitan Transportation Plan and a Transportation Improvement Plan to program the $10 million annually. And the Policy Board, that will be made up of City of Palmer, City of Wasilla, Matsu Borough, DOT, Knecht Tribe, and Chickaloon Tribe, assuming the governor approves that Policy Board makeup, they will decide as a body where to program those funds. The borough will have a say, because you'll have two seats on the board, but it'll be the whole body deciding annually how to spend that $10 million.
So I guess the question was, does a program need to be participating in all these different ones to get the $10 million? Or we can just take it all and put it all to the roads?
There are also the public transit... Well, the public transit funding that I'm talking about is separate from the MPO. The MPO will support planning functions for public transit, and the MPO will program infrastructure into our Metropolitan Transportation Plan and our TIP. But then, the federal Transit Authority funding would then help pay for those things. So it's... We're talking about three different topics, and they're all spread out, but they're also connected. So the funding really is just for the MPO. The stormwater management program and public transit are separate, and we'll have to think about new funding mechanisms to support those.
Do we... Are we required to have the transit and the other ones to get the funding? Or no?
So we are required to have public transit be part of our MPO planning processes, and so they have a seat at the table. And we're making sure that we're not just planning for roads, but we're also looking at bike and pet infrastructure and public transit infrastructure. But then, becoming a direct recipient and supporting public transit isn't a requirement. It's, I'm gonna come to the body asking if you would like to.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments? Questions? Okay, all right. Thanks, Kim. So the next item on our agenda, then, is the discussion of the gravel pit ordinance. There will be no action taken on this ordinance 22-131 at this meeting. And this agenda item was requested by Assemblyperson Benar. You want to talk about it, Ron? You requested that it be put on the agenda, so you have some comments? Or should I ask other people if they got comments?
I was just reaching out to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Their thoughts. I know I talked to one gentleman, and he had talked about amendments possibility. And I know we brought some up, and I wanted to give them time to ask their opinion, basically.
Okay, all right. So commissioners, thoughts regarding...
I think the amendments made a big difference. It was brought up again, but the amendments were provided at that time, and it was approved by the same 5-2 vote.
Okay. Commissioner Allen, you have comments?
Just very briefly, thanks. I agree. I think the amendments go a long way. I do think they make it... They make the system... In some ways, they make the system better than it is now, for sure. My only concern remains that the version that I've seen still basically eliminates the public process. And I'd like to see some way that we could incorporate some sense of public process back into that. But I do think that we're moving in the right direction, it feels like to me.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the amendments go a long way, and I need to study it a little bit more here. But public process, you know, we... This thing has been pretty much on the docket for 90 days, and there was all sorts of accusations about this thing trying to get pushed through and through the planning board, and that never did happen. So I'd like to look at this a little more, but there's potential here.
Commissioner Cohen?
I agree. I believe that the process was done well, and it did come through. I'm still pretty new with the process here. But if there... I would assume that the more amendments that come in is only gonna make it better. And if there was any to try to bring in public support, I could support that. I would think that that would be something that could be done. But I do believe it's fine the way that it is as well, because of the way that it's written. I think the amendments made it better.
Thank you. So then, answer your question, sir, or did?
Yes, did. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I should give the assembly an opportunity also. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to speak to a couple things. I'm a numbers guy, so I don't make any decisions without looking at math. I take no emotion into anything we do. So I just want to speak to a couple things. There's been some misinformation, or maybe some confusion on the math side of things. And so currently, just so everybody knows, I think it's fair to use one acre as a measurement, a form of measurement for... Since most of our lots in the Matsu Borough are an acre, so I've had a lot of people call me and ask me, or, you know, talk to me about this, and I ask them, well, you know, just curious, how much gravel is... Do you think 2,000 yards is spread out over an acre? And I've heard 3 feet, 5 feet, 10 feet. Who knows? How do you even measure that? It's 14 inches. So I just wanted to put that out there. 2,000 yards spread out over an acre is 14 inches. 10,000 yards is 6 feet 2 inches. Some other math people have asked me about a lot is my half a mile radius. Half a mile radius is 502 acres. I suspect the average subdivision out here, I would guess, is about 40 acres. Some are larger, some are smaller. So you're looking at about 12 and 1/2 subdivisions spread to make sure that they're not close to each other. So again, half a mile radius, just so everybody is aware, is 502 acres. Back to the public process, I think this is the 20th week that this has been out there in one form or another, going all the way back to the original introduction at the assembly before it even went to the Planning Commission. I've had people ask me, because I spoke at the last meeting, and said, you know, that the home builders have been doing this forever. Every builder does, right? We'll take gravel from that one to that one, whatever it may be. Or in my case, in the past, I've given it away a couple times. It gets in the way. So they says, well, why can't we enforce that? We shouldn't enforce that. You shouldn't be able to give it away without a permit. Okay, at what cost? That's what I want everybody here to think about, at what cost? We could, as a Matsu Borough Assembly, decide that we want to get intimately involved in every aspect of people's lives out here, like Anchorage does. But their mill rate's 40 to 44% higher than ours. If you pull out their police and some of the things, apples to apples, Cheyenne and I were going over this the other day, it's a little over 40%. So at what cost do we want to get intimately involved in everybody's life? And then the last thing I want to speak to, because I was asked to by the owners of two of the four largest real estate brokerages in the valley, a third of which will be calling me tomorrow, the Valley Board of Realtors did not take a vote of their body, nor their board. A few members of their board spoke. There's been no vote. And I can tell you, two of the four largest owners out here are livid that they're trying to act like they're speaking on behalf of them. Realtors out here know that affordable housing is the key to their success. We grew in the last 10 years. Anchorage shrank. I don't think it's a coincidence. So anyways, I just wanted to put that out there. There's been no vote for the Valley Board of Realtors. On the flip side of that, the Matsu home builders, who, if this passes, by the way, actually probably hurts, represents, I believe, 123 or 4 businesses with a board substantially larger than the Valley Board of Realtors, and they have voted unanimously to support this, 100%. So I'll leave it at that.
Further questions or comments from any of the assembly? Yeah, go ahead, Stephanie.
I just, you know, for what it's worth, what I have been hearing from people who have reached out and overwhelmingly been against this, and overwhelmingly at the last meeting, is the thing I've heard more than anything is for the private property owners in the valley, the residential homeowners who are paying taxes. If we have something that could significantly impact their value going in, whether that's a gravel pit or a concert venue, they want to have a say on it, and not to stop it, but to have some consideration for the impacts on their property value and use of their property. And so, kind of corollarily to that is, so you got private property owner against private property owner. You know, what does that balance look like? So there's this narrative that somehow this permitting process is holding graveling back right now. And if you look at that, you've got a $1,000 permit and a permit application, which I included in the pack if anybody wants to look at it, does not require an engineer survey and could be filled out by somebody in a couple days. And if you look at the applications that have come through, you know, people have done something as simple as a site plan with dots on it. So, you know, that doesn't seem like an onerous permit process. If you want to level a lot, and you're under 2,000 cubic yards, you can do it now. If you're over that, you can go through an admin permit. And 80... Since 2005, 88% of those have been approved. And if you look at conditional use permits, 80... More than 85%. So you got a process that has worked since 2005 with assemblies that have been a little left of center and a little right of center. I think that's kind of a testimony to having a pretty good permit process, but certainly doesn't speak to this process holding people up from doing gravel. They can do that right now. They just go through the process that they need to, and if it's an admin permit, it has to be decided by code in 30 days. So I don't... You know, the other thing I would look at is, and I've asked people about, is this take a long time? Is this onerous? And I've talked to excavators out here and folks who have done it, and they say they can do it, you know, in a heartbeat, basically. And lastly, just on the process, so this has been out on the street a long time, but what's out in front of people is a permit process that would remove the permit. There's nothing on the table yet, as far as what we're gonna be talking about on Tuesday. What has been talked about is a registration process that may or may not, depending on amendments, involve operating on the weekends, may or may not, depending on amendments, include a public process, may or may not, depending on amendments, allow operations to be stacked next to each other or have to be a half-mile apart. So for the public, who will probably likely be here on Tuesday, they're gonna be commenting before we even know what we are gonna be voting on, because all those amendments haven't been introduced yet. So process-wise, that's where I've also heard, how is the public supposed to give us good comment when we haven't even cobbled this together, and it's significantly different than what came in front of the Planning Commission that did have public testimony? So anyways, just for what it's worth, those are some of the comments that I've been receiving, and things that I've looked at when trying to judge if we have an onerous process that's holding back gravel and is also protecting the private property owners who could be impacted by a gravel operation next to them.
Any other comments? Yes.
So I believe that most of the public are under the idea that these are gravel pits going in next to their homes and stuff. And then, when they've got assembly people reaching out to other districts and saying that there's thousands and thousands of trucks that are gonna be going through their neighborhoods, is doing a very grave injustice to what we're trying to accomplish here. And that's all I got to say.
Okay, all right. Deputy Mayor, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say that legislation comes before us, this body, all the time, that we're neither a sponsor nor a cosponsor of. And I think when that happens, I don't care if we're talking about gravel, gun ranges, it doesn't matter. When you're neither a sponsor nor a cosponsor, I think we owe it to the process to ask ourselves one simple question. Is there an opportunity to take the process that's in place and improve it? It's a very simple yes or no, whether that comes with amendments or not. And really, I think we just need to keep it that simple. If anybody up here believes that they can improve the current process, then bring forth some amendments. Try to be respectful of the, you know, the community and prefile them in time that they can be reviewed and understood before getting here. If you don't think it can be improved, vote no. This isn't my legislation. I could really care less about it, to be honest with you. I don't... The only thing I know about gravels is it's hard, and if it's in my way, I give it away. That's really like, that's limitations of my gravel expertise. I don't know anything about it. I want to analyze numbers and patterns from the last 18 years and see if it can be improved. And that's it. If I can help improve it, I will, and I'll vote for it. If I cannot, and I don't think it's gonna be better than the current process, I'm gonna vote against it. So that's my advice to everybody up here, is just try to be respectful. And if you think you can improve it, improve it. And if you can't, vote no.
Yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
And I'm not sure that this is a forum for this, because I never am, but has there ever been a performance bond required of anybody to say, you know, I'm gonna do the things that I said I was gonna do. I am gonna put the... I'm gonna reclaim the land. I am gonna get that big mountain of gravel off my property. Have we ever required a... Like, you know, when you're gonna do something, you go to a bail bondsman, and they say, okay, $1,000 bucks for $10,000 of the... Have we ever done that, Al?
I don't know, but we might have the answer here. Go ahead, sir.
Through the mayor, to Assemblymember McKee, Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Borough, a performance bond is not required as part of a gravel permit process.
And they wouldn't be under this new thing either? I mean, under this...
Correct. Yeah. The state does require a bond for reclamation. However, it's not very strong. It's a very low number, and also their definition of reclamation is not what you think it is. It's basically, if you didn't make a cliff that people can fall off and die, it's been reclaimed. So...
So if you go to Big Bob's bail bond service, whatever the heck, and he says, okay, you're gonna pay me $1,000, and I'm gonna put up $10,000 to save your hide if you bail out on this. We've never done that. If we did that, maybe people would actually do the things they say they're gonna do, like reclaim and such, which seems to be huge with everyone and property values. I don't know.
Through the mayor, the question of requiring a performance bond is an interesting one, and I think it deserves a whole separate discussion. There's a big question of if they don't do what they say or they're gonna do, are we going to then take that money and go onto private property and actually do things on that private... There's a lot of legal questions that come with that. We do have other permits within code that do require performance bond, but not in this particular case.
If you get somebody going to work for you that says, I'm licensed, bonded, and insured, you say, that's the guy I want, because I know that Big Bob is gonna kick his butt. Nobody else is gonna put up a bond for him if he doesn't behave himself in the future. I just thought that that might be something attractive to kind of ease people's minds a little bit.
Further comment? Yeah, Deputy Mayor?
If you would like to work together on bonding, I would love to spend a lot of man-hours on that. We... It was my biggest concern with the potential West Assitna mining operation eventually. State constitution for bonding is 750 bucks an acre. You can operation eventually. State constitution for bonding is 750 bucks an acre. You cannot do anything with that, even locally, let alone remotely. And so I I believe Nick can or Alex can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the state constitution amount is $750. Reclamation is, I thought there were a state code or no.
There's nothing in the Constitution about reclamation bonds. You're probably talking about a state statute.
Okay, either way, so state of Alaska.
Very big difference.
Yeah, that's fair to say. But is it not, is it 750 bucks, I believe?
So through the Mayor to Assemblymember Yount, the state, through state statute, does require $750 per acre for for reclamation. However, if you have like a 30 acre site, I think they can do one acre at a time. So you put up 750 bucks and you can roll it over into subsequent acres. And then I don't think, I don't think it's very heavily enforced, or have they ever used that $750 to actually reclaim a site?
Yeah. So back to that, I just wanted to add that it it is a concern. We have a bonding requirement right now for multimillion dollar RSA contracts, of which we've had multiple contractors be relieved of their duties in the past or quit on us, and we've never attached a single one of those. So if we're going to talk about bonds, I I think we should, it's a lot bigger conversation than talking about somebody moving a couple of feet of gravel on a one acre lot. It doesn't make sense. I I think it's a whole nother discussion for later, like Alex said, and it's a, if we want to talk about bonding, it's a, there's a lot of things more important and bigger than this, mainly large gravel pits, RSA contracts, other things that we we put out to bid here. So anyway, it, I just wanted to mention that. And yeah, $750 an acre is laughable. And it's not even for every single acre. Like Alex said, they can literally move it down the line. It's, it's laughable. So we, if we want to look at, we we should protect our borough substantially better than the state minimum, because the state minimum is nothing. It's, it's, anybody can get around it. So I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner? Oh, he covered it. Okay. Yes, Assemblyperson two.
I guess I should say something. So I I really liked my first legislation is just say, instead of 2,000, 10,000, and let it go. And 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 my thought process was to make it easier for people to develop undesirable lots, to make a young person with a backhoe and a trailer and a dump truck, make it easy for him to go out and make a living. I figured the cheaper the lot, the cheaper the house, the guy that's making $18 or $20 an hour might be able to pay rent there. And maybe it won't have to be a dry cabin. And if we don't know what a dry cabin is, that means they don't have toilet, running water, sewer. I mean, that's crazy. But we have a lot of people in our in our borough that are leaving, living in dry cabins. I don't know about everybody that's listening to me today, but it hurts me to know that. And I feel that it should hurt the political body that they, that that's going on in their community. So how can we relieve that? That's what this gravel extraction is about. It is not about the multimillionaire gravel people with millions of dollars of equipment to go on a lot and make a living. How laughable. But I understand that a lot of people talk about stuff that they don't I'll, I'll, I'll stop right there. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, Assemblyperson Ron.
It's these undesirable lots that, if we developed right, won't end up with a trailer on them, a camp. You know, we're trying to raise the appraisal value of the lot and bring a tax base to the borough. And at the same time, trying to keep affordable housing. And that's all this legislation is about. It's not to take and put gravel pits in everybody's backyard. That's all I got to say.
Assemblyperson Tana?
Yeah. Driving from, we're along the Selden side all the way through here. You know, as I'm driving, I counted like over 20, you know, sites right along the road, how big hills. And that's mathematically, if you do a basic math, I mean, it adds up a lot more than 10,000 cubic yards. But anyways, and we're limited, even with current amendments, we're trying to limit it to a five year thing. But ultimately speaking, I think there's, we've, I've attended a meeting with, it was a steering committee with Mike Brown and others, where we want to invite more businesses and and designate even some areas where commercial stuff can go in and things like that. And a lot of them could be that if those lots were improved. So I'm, I guess my way of thinking is that's too easy to make it easier for a builder, developer, whoever purchased a lot, that could be a good thing. But anyways, I'm going to go back to point out some other things that we said, the individual Realtors who spoke, Deputy Mayor brought up that they spoke, I guess, made it look like they spoke for a lot of people, but they kind of spoke for themselves. So we can't be misled by that. And then when he also brought up the builders' side of it, they're the ones that provide for the Realtor's stuff to sell oftentimes. So, I mean, one doesn't go without the other. And I think if we got all builders, you know, riled up, we could have a completely different setting in this room. So I don't want Assembly to be persuaded by that. Four page application that everybody talks about how simple it is and how easy it is to just pay $1,000, get it done. I sat down for almost two hours with Alex's department and with his staff, and we reviewed two applications, one that got denied and one that got approved. Besides this four pages, there are about 31 checkmarks here for the files to be attached and things like that, that even if you hired a professional and spent 40, $50,000, it's not even guaranteed that you're going to have it. So I'm just saying, let's not be also misled by application process, how simple it is, and that 85 or whatever the process percent that have been approved. There's a lot of them that did not apply, that for the, once they found out what it really takes. So I just, and then some of the numbers that Deputy Mayor brought up as far as the one acre lot, whether it's a two acre lot, it's only about two and a half to three feet. So when we put it in perspective, it's not, it's not all that much. And I just wanted you guys to consider those, some of the factors that I was here.
Further discussion on this subject? Okay, the next item on our agenda then is parting comments from the Mayor and the Assembly, Planning Commission and staff. I'm going to recognize the Chair from the Planning Commission to ask the input or parting comments from his commission.
Okay, let's start down here with CJ Gown. Any comments?
No, I don't have any comments. Thanks.
Yeah, I ran down from Lake Louise, snow machining to come and listen to this great presentation. I appreciate it. There's a bunch of work went into and what you guys did tonight. And fun to listen to. Looking forward to some road improvements.
Rick?
I I just wanted to thank the staff. I was really impressed with these presentations today. I thought they were really well done and really informative. And I'm often impressed by the level of expertise that we have on staff here at the Matsu Borough. So thank you so much.
And that goes by sentiments too. Staff did an excellent job with their presentations, as always, and I, I thank them.
Okay, thank you. So for parting comments from Assembly, Assemblyperson Anna, you have parting comments?
Thank you to everyone who participated, and thank you for all the.
Through the Mayor.
Who's on the phone?
Oh. Yeah, just Commissioner, Commissioner Fernandez here. Just wanted to make sure that Commissioner Rubio and I had an opportunity to.
Go, go ahead.
Departing comments.
Go ahead, Will.
No, I I appreciate it. To Borough staff, yes, extremely thorough presentation. I really enjoyed listening to the progress that we're making, the development that the borough is seeing as far as road maintenance and and the development and progress goes. And to thank everyone on the Assembly as well as the Planning Commission for the participation today. It's been a great learning experience for me as someone who is in their first term to understand at a deeper level the public process. And so I'm, I'm a very attentive listener. So I I really appreciate the knowledge and the testimony from all members today. Thank you.
And Commissioner?
Yeah, Commissioner Rubio here. Same, same. Thanks. Thanks all the way around tonight. A lot of good stuff out there. Really appreciated everyone's input. Thank you.
All right. But while we're online, is there any of the Assembly people? No, we do not. Okay. All right. So back to you again, sir. Thank you for letting us, for your parting comments.
Well, thank you to, for everyone here, and that we're actually wrapping it up before 10. Thank you for all.
Parting comments?
Thank you to the Planning Commission. I hope we have shorter meetings in the future and have more discussion. And thank you to the the staff. That really is an amazing amount of work that's being done. And I really appreciate the the chance to brief us at the Assembly level, what you're trying to to work through. So much appreciated.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, Brad, Cole, Tom, great job tonight. You guys are working really hard. That was a super thorough update. I appreciate that. Back to the finances from earlier. It stinks. I wish we were 30 million the other way, but I do believe we can solve this problem. I, like I said, we got budget season upon us. There's no reason to go borrow a bunch of money right now, especially with interest rates as high as they are. We'll fix this. So I'm looking forward to putting tip 21 fully to bed. We thought we had her there, but some scopes changed and some inflation changed. And that's all right, we're all problem solvers. And I believe we'll do that without asking our kids and grandkids to pay for it. Planning Commission, great job. Thanks for all the awesome input. You have no idea how important your body is to this public process and to the borough as a whole. And I appreciate each and every one of you. You guys are doing a great job. So that's all I got.
Mr. Attorney, parting comments? Nope. Mr. Manager, parting comments?
Yeah, just very quickly. So a lot of work and decisions ahead of us, obviously with the MPO, the MS4 in transit. Staff have a plan. Some of that was to communicate that timeline. So be ready. It's coming fast and furious. Lots of projects in progress as well. And I know Clint stepped out already, but and I've said this before, but in the next three to five years, there's a lot of opportunity for a lot of road system improvements between DOT and what the borough is doing. So some of that is DOT's got to stay on it, you know, 2024 can't become, 2025 can't become, 2026. But the same is true for us. So we just got to keep our foot on the gas. But but I'm really encouraged when you look at what's happening on both sides, state and local, that there are a lot of opportunities to get, you know, to get on top of some of these road issues that we hear about all the time. So just wanted to conclude with that. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. No, the only thing I would say, Lonnie, is they were talking about having a MPO meeting on the 29th of March and inviting the Assembly and the Commission members. So if if that is what's going to be happening, then we need to be sure and advertise it. So I didn't know if you had that on your radar or not.
I did not have it on my radar, and we would need to advertise it, I would say, no later than the 29th, you said? A little later than the next Friday. So we would need the information by next Tuesday.
Okay, that was my understanding. Is that right, Mike, that that's meeting and and that that the people were going to be invited?
They will have a forum.
Right. And the same thing with the Planning Commission, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Lonnie. Okay, Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments?
Just really briefly, everything these folks presented tonight was so clear. I mean, it was, it wasn't like some arcane, you know, ideology and all that kind of stuff that I could actually truly understand it and ask some intelligent questions, which were meaningful to me. So good on you. Thank you.
Assemblyperson two, parting comments?
I I would like to say thank you to the staff also. And and I would echo what McKee, Dee just spoke. And and I would say that, Kim, you were very easy to understand also on your presentation. And I I might ask some pointed questions, but I just kind of ask because I want to know. And I and I feel that our community or our citizens deserve that we are paying attention to the purse, and we're not just letting the money go through our fingers, because that's the easy thing to do, and that we do do the work and that we do get them the best value that we can for the dollars. And I appreciate all your guys' comments tonight. And thank you.
Assemblyperson Bernice, go ahead.
I'd like to thank the staff, the members of the public, and Planning Commission and my fellow Assembly people. And I'd like to thank Jesus for all the wonderful blessings that He gives us. Thank you for living in such a wonderful borough that we can all come together. Please bless us with wisdom so we can carry out things that'll glorify our Lord. And please help the unfortunate, the people with addictions, anything that people are suffering hardships. We just ask for all your blessings, Lord. You guide us, that we can reach out to you and thank you. In Jesus's name, amen.
I too would like to thank the Planning Commissioners and especially the new ones that I appointed. Thank you all for saying that, as well as the existing ones. And thanks, of course, to the staff that help us to make us look good and and also for the Assembly. And so with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:47.